This status hearing shall come to order from the Committee on Rules, Federal Foreign, Micronesian Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, and Election Reform. It's 5:35 PM. In accordance with the open government law, notices of this hearing were sent to all main media outlets, all senators and stakeholders, five days in advance on August 4th, and a second notice was sent on August 7th, 2014. I'd like to recognize and thank Senator and Dr. Eileen Yamashita for being here tonight. She was here with us in the other status hearing that we had, and we're convening the status hearing for the purposes of discussing publicly two items. First item is the animal quarantine procedures pursuant to local laws, and the second item is the status of Public Law 29-127 pursuant to indigenous fishing rights. We were going to have a hearing last week, but in preparation of that impending storm, we did the most prudent and responsible thing, and that was to postpone this hearing. And so, we apologize, and I apologize for any inconveniences that delay may have caused you. I know Mr. and Mrs. Jackson were here, and they didn't want to leave until all their guests were notified that this hearing was...whether or not that typhoon was going to hit the island, they weren't going to leave this legislature until all their people were notified. So, thank you for being here, and the others that were here as well. I want to do two things before I call the Director of Agriculture up. I was just discussing with Senator Yamashita, and she asked me if I saw the proposed rules and regs for the indigenous fishing rights. I told her that that was...I did, I saw it, and that really is not the purpose of tonight's status hearing. Unfortunately, we're not going to get into the proposed rules and regs, section by section, because those rules and regs still have to go through a public hearing process. The governor still has to transmit it to the legislature, and then the legislature will be able to take action on it. And then she said the most appropriate thing to me, and Senator Yamashita said, "But at least we can hear tonight that you guys have been having meetings with the Director of Agriculture, and that you have a work product that you're prepared to present tonight so that we can move forward." On the second issue, the matter of the animal quarantine procedures, let me make it perfectly clear that I've not taken any sides, I've not favored any veterinarian over the other. My role here tonight, together with this committee and Senator Yamashita, is purely procedural. Thirty or so days ago, we heard a public commitment from the Director of Agriculture saying that she was going to conduct inspections on the current animal quarantine facility, and that she was going to conduct an inspection on the proposed animal quarantine facility. But prior to that, she was going to develop a checklist pursuant to law, have people buy off on that checklist to make sure that the standards that they're going to be inspecting these facilities under are pursuant to law, and it's going to be objective and not subjective, and that those inspections were to occur, and that the Director and the territorial vet would simply do a thumbs up or thumbs down. I've never taken the position, Director, you know, I've never told you, "Go and inspect those facilities and open it," or "Go inspect the facilities and shut it down." So, just so we have a basic level of understanding before we're going to proceed, I've heard the Director make some comments through the media that she has conducted the animal quarantine facilities, but my office has never received that report. So, hopefully tonight, we'll get an update of what she did, how she did it, and what checklist she did to base those decisions under. The second thing I want to do is make sure that it's notated in the record that Dr. Poole's not here, right? Yeah, Dr. Poole will not be here tonight, because he told me a week ago that he's experiencing some stomach issues, and that he asked actually that the status hearing be delayed. But I told him that unfortunately, I will not delay the status hearing, but that his attendance and his absence will be duly noted, whatever the case may be. And so, just so you know, there's not some conspiracy that the territorial vet is not here tonight, and that he's evading the public or he's evading the people. So, we can have that level of understanding, and that we can continue the kind of decorum that we've had over the last month or so on this particular issue. I would really appreciate that. And this is not going to be the last status hearing. We'll meet as much as possible so that we can get to the bottom of whether or not the Agriculture Director is moving forward on her public commitments to do these things. And so, Senator, if you want to...okay, you're good. Okay, so having said that, let me invite the Director of Agriculture up. And since Dr. Poole is not here, Director, are you going to maybe be able to make the presentation yourself?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to give some time to have the Director give her opening statement, and then we have four individuals that signed up to testify. Hopefully, it's based on the status of the issue, right? And so, Director, you may proceed.
Okay. Buenos notis. Good evening, Senator Rory, Chairman of Natural and Human Resources, and Eileen Yamashita, Senator Eileen, members of the community. Well, you know, since the last status hearing, which was on, I think it was in June 18th, I have promised the senator that I would prepare the checklist, and you will find in the enclosed folder the checklist that I have promised you, that's the Department of Agriculture to follow when they go out to do inspection. Secondly, I told you that I promised you that I would do the inspection on the two quarantine stations that are here on Guam. Harper quarantine station, I did went, and I visited, and to my, you know, to my inspection, it's presentable, and it's allowable, it's something that they're following the law. And then I went to Pet Lodge in Anderson, I did inspection there, and it's the same thing with the Harper's kennel, they're following the rules and regs. And in fact, I was invited to one that is soon to be open, it's a first-class quarantine station, and you remember the last time some of the constituency said that they have no choice to go to? So now, in two weeks or so, that new pet quarantine station is going to be open, and now they have a choice to go to. They don't have to go to Harper, and they say that Pet Lodge is, you know, they're not allowed to go there, so... And then the third, I promised to visit the Wise Owl quarantine station, but you know, when I went to visit the quarantine station, I don't see any perimeter fence around it, you know? This is the quarantine station of Wise Owl, and I didn't see, so I didn't waste my time to go in and inspect, because there's no rules and regs that says that...I mean, the rules and regs says that it has to be, you know, fenced with a perimeter, the perimeter has to be fenced in. So, right away, there was nothing, so I did not go in to check the quarantine station.
Director, did you contact the owner of Wise Owl to have that inspection of his facility?
Well, I didn't want to contact them, because if I do, then, you know, their preparation will be done, and then I just, in fact, Pet Lodge or those people, we just went in and visited, because that was the instruction that was given to us, to just go visit, right? You don't need an invitation. So, I did, you know, I was...
So, when you conducted these inspections of the three facilities you mentioned, you did it based on the checklist that you developed?
Correct, correct, and I have enclosed in your folder the checklist of Harper and the Pet Lodge.
You do?
Yes.
Okay.
There's two inspections. So, like I say, those are the things that I promised the last time, and I have accomplished that. I feel that I have accomplished what is expected of me.
Did you develop a rating system, or is it just for each item you had passed or failed?
Yes, yes.
Yes, why?
It's a developed system.
It's a rating system?
Yes, it's a rating four, or four, or something like that.
Yes, I see here, two, you, one, two, one.
Yes.
So, wouldn't you think it'd be prudent to provide the same professional and administrative courtesies to Wise Owl to conduct the inspection, and then when it comes to your thinking that they don't have a perimeter fence?
Perimeter fence, then, why do I, I mean, you know, I didn't want to go in, and that...
But if you went inside, you would see that the quarantine facility is completely isolated, there's the perimeter, no better perimeter fence than a concrete fence?
Well, but you know, in a concrete fence, when the dog ran out, you cannot see it, you can't, you know, I understand that there was at one instant where the dog...
But do you know that there are more than, I mean, there's a separate entrance with...
Yeah, but the law says that, you know, that there should be a perimeter of eight, this, something like...
Well, I tell you, if a dog can escape the Wise Owl facility, then that's one heck of a dog, or a cat.
Yeah, so, you know, like, based on the...I was just basing on the law that was, you know, that the legislature had developed, the kind of fencing that is required, it didn't say they're concrete.
So, Director, so did you give a formal letter to Wise Owl that you rejected their inspection?
Well, I wasn't asked to do that, I mean, I didn't promise to do that.
You don't have to be asked to do...
I didn't promise to do that, to send him a letter that I did not inspect the facility. I was just informed that I was supposed to do...
First of all, I didn't ask you to do anything.
Yeah, just...
You promised that you would do this.
Correct, yes.
So, I want to be very clear, I don't, and Senator Yamashita knows this, I don't rule with a heavy hand, I don't.
I understand.
I'm just listening, I'm here to just get your report, and I want to say, Director, that, you know, this government, when someone applies for a permit, people cannot be ignored.
No.
The permit, the application, has to be accepted, has to be reviewed, and has to be approved or rejected.
Yes.
For the last eight years, you haven't rejected Wise Owl's application for a permit.
An application has to be processed through the Department of Public Works.
Well, for the occupancy, but...
For the occupancy, and there, and...
But for the approval of an animal quarantine facility, your department plays a major role, correct?
Yes, and I also understand that, you know, Public Health also did an inspection on that quarantine station, so I'm sure that it didn't pass, so what can I, you know, like I say, it's the first thing that I wanted to see was the perimeter fence, you know, chandling fence around the...
So, how do you bring closure to this issue that's been lingering for eight years?
Well, just for him to put that chandling fence around the perimeter, that's all, and he will be good to go.
But how would he know that if you're not rejecting his application?
Well, in fact, he was the one, you know, he sent a checklist for himself that he developed, remember? And on that checklist, it says that you have to have a fence, perimeter around the building. So, I don't have a copy of...
Did it say cyclone fence?
He did, and it...
No, you, your understanding of the law, does it say cyclone fence?
Fence, yes, you know...
Cyclone fence?
Yes, a perimeter with a...
But does it say cyclone fence?
Uh...
Doesn't.
Well, let me...
So, concrete might be acceptable?
Uh, no, the law says it has to be a...yeah, it says, "The premise of a city shall be surrounded by perimeter fence, not less than eight feet in height, on top of a barbed wire till inward. Fencing wire shall be of a mass size of two inches by two inches or less of no less than nine gates." So, this is the law that I am following, you know? Like I say, he can always come to the legislature and have the law changed, and we can deal with that. But as far as what the present law is all about, this is all I'm following.
Do you have anything in writing that you wrote to this facility to say that we received your application, we believe that you don't qualify pursuant to law, your application has therefore been denied?
Okay.
Have you, in the last 30 days, have you communicated at all with Wise Owl, at all?
Uh, no, he came to the office for a...
No, for this issue, Director?
Yes, no, I did not communicate, because I have a doctor...
So, in the last 30 days, did you communicate with Pet Lodge?
Uh, yes, the last 30.
Wow, they're very fortunate. In the last 30 days, did you communicate with Harper?
Correct.
Wow, they're very, very fortunate, Director, that they have your attention. Did you communicate in the last 30 days with this new facility that you said will be open in two weeks?
Yes, I did, yes. In fact, I went and inspected myself.
Okay, so how come in the last 30 days, you did not communicate with Wise Owl?
Because, you know, the reason why I did not communicate with him, because of the fact that...
Because you don't want to.
No, not necessarily, no, it's not because I don't want...
I'll stop you now, I'll stop you here. Thank you for your...
Thank you.
But don't leave. Let me express my extreme disappointment and frustration that you did not follow through with your commitment to the people, that you will do your job, and you would conduct an inspection, and you would simply pass them or fail them.
So, let me assure you, Senator...
Rory, just Rory.
That, Rory, that I will do tomorrow, come tomorrow, I'll make, you know...
A letter.
A letter to Dr. Wise Owl, tomorrow, has to be tomorrow, no later than tomorrow, okay? I promise you.
And I think, Director, with all due respect, that's important, because when you, ever you have a lingering issue, my only, my only goal here is to bring it to closure.
Yeah.
You can't bring this issue to closure if they are not told formally that their application for a permit's been denied.
Okay, so like I say, be no later than tomorrow, I'll send him a letter stating the reason why we, you know, we reject, or the reason why I didn't go to visit him, because like I say, the first impression that got me when I saw it, you know, there's no chandling fence.
Why is it that you had personal communications with these three other places?
Because I did go to visit them, I went to visit them, so...
But he invited you to his place.
Uh, yeah, but like I say...
You said you've never, ever been there in the last three years that you were Director?
Yes, yeah, you're right, Director, I mean, Senator.
Yeah. Is it, Director, is this personal, between you and Wise Owl?
No, it's just that, because, you know, like I said, no, I have no person, in fact, I don't really know him, you know, just through, you know, through his letters and stuff like that, but like I say, you know, I'm trying to do my best in my job to, and like I said, tomorrow, I promise that that letter will be forwarded to him, stating the reason why I did not...
So, this checklist you developed, you've never had a checklist before.
Huh?
This checklist is new?
Uh, no, it has been in the department, you know, but it's there, it has been in the department, that checklist, it's just a matter of, you know, updating it, but it's, it has been in the department for a while.
So, you've updated it?
Huh?
So, you've updated this checklist?
Yes, we updated a little bit.
So, at the last hearing, when Dr. Poole said that he inspects the current animal quarantine facilities around a regular basis, to what standard was he basing his inspections on?
Like I say, it has been in the, it has, you know, the department has that for a while already, so it's not something new that we developed yesterday, or, you know, it has been in the department, and they're going through the laws, you know, how they, that's where we base the checklist there.
Director, if somebody applies for a occupancy permit through Public Works, do you think it's only right that Public Works goes and inspect that facility, that house, for example?
Mm-hmm.
Someone, in order for someone to move into a house, they need an occupancy permit, and GPA has to sign off, Water Works has to sign off, and all the regulatorys have to sign off. Don't you think it's, it's good practice in the, as an operating procedure, that that family, that homeowner be told that based on the requirements of law, your occupancy permit is hereby approved, or is hereby denied? Don't you think that that's a standard that Public Works uses?
But I have, like I say, you know, I haven't seen one application, I have to go back and ask Dr. Poole whether there is an application from his office, and then from there, we'll derive, you know, we'll get our answers to him, okay?
So, at this point, it's clear that your inspection of, you can't just go to your office tomorrow morning and write a letter disapproving them when you haven't even conducted the inspection?
Yeah, but, you know, like I say, I have an idea, or, you know, based on the law that I'm reading from, that's where we reject, reject or accept.
But don't you think you should apply the same standard? I mean, my position from the very beginning was equal applicability under the law, that you have to treat everybody the same way.
Correct, that's right.
When on the three other facilities that you've inspected, you went in there with a checklist, and in some cases, you said four, you said three, you said two.
Yes, yes.
And that's what Public Health does also, when they inspect restaurants, they go by a merit or demerit system, and a point system, and then if they reach so many points, they get a certain letter grade, if they get an F, they get closed down.
Yes, so right there, you know, like I say, when I saw this, now that there's no perimeter, it just tells me that it's not abiding with the rules and regs that has been developed through the legislature, so that's, you know...
But I think what I'm after is common courtesy, that if somebody is asking for their facility to be inspected, that you go through the due diligence of going through the checklist, and so that you have something...
Yes, okay, yes.
So, it's not just the matter of you tonight going home and typing a letter to the applicant, saying your inspection request is hereby denied.
Yeah, that I was...
But then how are you going to base that denial? You're not going to have a checklist, so you're...
So, like I say, you know, I, that was not on the agreement that I made the last time, or the promise that I would, you know, write him a letter or something like that, it's just a matter of...
But 30 or so days ago...
Yes.
You could have just told me that you would not inspect the facility, because he doesn't have a perimeter fence, but you said you will inspect it.
Yeah, I would inspect it.
You said you would inspect it.
Yes, but like I say...
But you didn't inspect it.
Uh-huh, but when I looked at the law, and it says there, "Security fence and gate", and that tells me that, hey, listen, there's a, hiccups along the way, there's a hiccups, you know, you don't need to...
Yeah, but don't you think it would be useful for the applicant to know what else might be a problem, Director?
Uh-huh.
Are you playing favorites here, and looking at three other quarantine facilities, and yet...
No, Senator, I'm not playing favor, because they're all, you know, we're all human beings, and we need all to be treated alike, so that was, maybe it was my error, perhaps, that I did not, you know, because like I say, I first mentioned that the only thing that tells me to inspect when, you know, they're in compliance, but apparently when I saw, is he's not in compliance, so, you know, I said, it's not a waste of time, but like I say, I will not, you know, go in.
The facility is on a second floor, do you even know that?
Facility, yeah, and it, but...
So, if you did an eight-foot perimeter border, that they're on the second floor, the second floor is higher than the eight-foot requirement?
But it didn't say they're concrete wall, no? It didn't say they're concrete wall, right? The law says it, fence, perimeter, it's a fence, not less than eight feet in, on top with barbed wires, is there barbed wires on top of that? It's nothing, no? So, that's, you know, what can I do? That's what the law say, I didn't, you know, it's the, it's the laws that I'm requiring, and like I say, it's the legislator who implemented this law, unless, you know, who changed it, whoever wants to have this changed, they will come to...
Yeah, but how could you even get to that point when you haven't brought closure to their application?
Uh-huh, so, like I say, you know, as far as, perhaps, maybe it was my mistake, so like, tomorrow, if that's the case, I would, you know, write him a letter and tell them that...
And then how would you base, what would you base your letter on?
Well, right away, you know, I can tell that it wasn't, he has not implemented or followed the rules and regs, which says there, it says there's on the gar, so... And it's, yeah, and it says, "It cannot, shall be provided with a potlock and a latch, that closure that cannot be opened by, you know, confined dogs," so...
But you wouldn't know that, because you didn't go inside.
Yeah, but usually, they have this out in the, you know, in the perimeter. So, okay, like I say, you know, that's the only reason why I did not go in, because when I did not see the perimeter with enclosed fence, and then if anything else, we'll, you know, we'll let him know the reason why he...
Okay, let me call up some people, so we could just get through this, and then we'll go to the other issue.
Correct.
Mr. Frank Shocker? Dr. Pomes? Dr. Yoshiro? Yeah? Okay, I'll take this panel now, and then when you're done, I'll call the next two people on the list. Okay, Mr. Shocker?
Before we record, my name is Frank Shocker, I'm the chairman of the Chamoral Tribe. First of all, I'd like to applaud the legislature's efforts in ensuring that the kennels, the existing kennels, are inspected. I've heard a lot of things that didn't please me about Harper Valley Kennels from friends who had their dogs there, that were not taken care of properly. They came out of the kennels with an abundance of ticks, and fleas, and other parasites, and there's no reason for that in an acceptable kennel. Secondly, I'd like to applaud the Director's position in insisting that the law be followed. I raise a lot of animals myself, I'm a rancher. I have my livestock, I have my poultry, I have my dogs, I have my cats, I'm an animal lover, but I can be the first one to tell you that animals don't always do what you expect them to do or want you to do. The additional security mandated by law on that perimeter fence is a necessity in a quarantine facility, regardless if the quarantine facility is an indoor facility. You have to have security in layers, you cannot just depend on the animal staying inside. Doors can be opened by employees who aren't paying attention, doors can be forgotten to be left, and left open, you need that external perimeter barrier. If the law stipulates that there's a fence that needs to be there in place, then there should be a fence there in place. Now, if he wants to erect an eight-foot concrete wall with barbed wire on top, I don't see a problem with that, it still meets pretty much the requirement or intent of the law. However, not completing the inspection was a failure on her part, not staying in contact with the person who submitted the application was a failure on her part. I don't see an issue with people applying for permits to have their own quarantine facility, the law doesn't prohibit that. What it does do is it establishes standards that have to be met, and I think that standards also have to be put in place for when these facilities get inspected, either on a quarterly or an annual basis. Whenever they're reapplying for their license or permit to be a quarantine facility, should be a minimum time period for an official inspection, okay? We have to get more proactive in this area, we've been too lazy in this area, and we're risking our rabies-free status. We are, we're one of five in the world, we need to maintain that rabies-free standard, we need to maintain the standards of this law. Agriculture needs to be more proactive at it, certainly, and I'm glad to see that the legislature is also getting proactive with it, and I hope to see it continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, Dr. Pomes?
I'm Dr. Paul Pomes, I'm a veterinarian who came to Guam to fill in a disla veterinary clinic, and to, it's been an interesting experience so far. The quarantine facilities, as I understand from Doctor, from the Director, I've heard no just indication that the original public health defects, our original defects found by the public health report have been repaired in any substantial way, or in the acknowledgement that they have. Therefore, with the absence of the perimeter fence, I think the Director was quite justified not to waste taxpayer money and taxpayer time conducting an inspection that would inevitably lead to failure. The perimeter fence is a no-brainer, it has to be defense-in-depth, that's why we have rabies vaccination, that's why we have multiple layers in a facility to make sure that animals, if they bypass one defense mechanism, get caught by another. I have some reports here from a letter that Dr. Joseph sent to the Hawaii State Territorial Veterinarian to the World Health Organization back in 2010, trying to get the rabies status of Guam reversed, and I just don't see how that really works with him becoming a Director of a quarantine facility. And that's, the letter's been submitted, okay. You also have my memo that I submitted prior to this hearing on the major points of why I think having Wise Owl approved as a quarantine facility is a very bad idea. The, again, the lack of defense... The, again, the lack of defense in depth, the status of why we should not be vaccinating for rabies goes completely against biosecurity concerns, that if we should get an outbreak, we don't want to end up like Bali where they're massacring dogs because rabies has gotten loose and they have a wild dog population. If that gets here, then the jungle, it's just going to be a disaster. And not vaccinating our pets is a way to avoid disaster. Anything else?
But he wouldn't be the one to decide whether or not the pets should be vaccinated. That's the job of the territorial vet. So you're saying that as a...
I have an informed opinion as a scientist and as a veterinarian.
No, but I'm saying, as an owner of an animal quarantine facility, that owner would not be the one to make the decision on whether or not pets should be vaccinated.
No, that should be a regulation and it should be vaccinated.
Yeah, so, yeah. So I don't understand your, I mean, I appreciate your testimony and I don't...
Wise Owl has testified that rabies vaccination is unnecessary.
Correct, but that's something that he would not be able to decide to do because the, there's regulations that require that.
My professional opinion, my professional opinion is that Wise Owl should not be entrusted with observing all the regulations that don't fit with his worldview of how things should be done or must be done.
Do you have any evidence that he's not following what he's supposed to be following?
I have the report from the Allied, Board of Allied Health Examiners, which in all respects indicates that as a veterinarian...
I don't know if we can even discuss anything that the Allied Health Board has done, given all these experiences in court and what the courts have determined.
Well, that's just that court has never held on any factual issue. The court has always done it on procedural issues.
Yeah.
Which, to me, is, just means they just need to take their time to dot their i's and cross their k's to appropriately process that suspension.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Okay. Okay, Dr. Oshiro?
My name is Dr. Vanessa Oshiro, and I'm a veterinarian and the owner-operator of Marianas Vet Care in Baragada, Guam. For the record, I was born and raised on Guam. Though I graduated from Simon Sanchez High School in 1988, I never worked in the local community until after 22 years of living and working stateside, I returned to practice veterinary medicine here at home to honor the life and last wishes of my sister Karina Oshiro, whom my family lost to cancer in 2007. She too had left Guam for education and came back many years later to serve in her own community. And she too also knew what I know. Guam is a good place and worth the personal sacrifices that must be made in worldly opportunity for children of this island like us to come home and share what we have gained in the world amongst our people in the place of our ancestry. Indeed, the words of the Inefresi, the Chamorro pledge recited by Guam's schoolchildren ring true for us. From the innermost recesses of my mind, from deep within my heart, and with all my might, this I offer: To protect and defend the beliefs, the culture, the language, the air, the water, and the land of the Chamorro. My heritage comes directly from God. This I affirm on the Bible and my flag, the flag of Guam. To the rest of the world and in the eyes of God, I personally want always to raise the flag of Guam proudly and wave it like a banner. So many people of this land have gone before us to give us the privilege of a distinctive, noble heritage on this earth, but we cannot pass that heritage down to the generations that follow us without leading by our own good example. We have in the debate presented before us tonight an opportunity to be such an example. It is the charge of the Department of Agriculture to protect the land and the water of Guam, just as our children pledge to do. They are our government authority on the matter, and in our faith, we understand that governmental authority, all governmental authority, comes from God. Such authority is given to establish good order. At the highest levels of government, the responsibility to fulfill this purpose is also the greatest. I therefore implore the legislators before us, most significantly the chairperson on the Committee of Agriculture, to help the people, your constituents, who benefit from the peace of good order, to understand how you can so vigorously support and defend a man who is clearly determined to undermine the current order in favor of himself. Dr. Joseph would have you believe that he is the regular victim of the government, regardless of administration. He openly criticizes the current administration, but he is on the public record criticizing the administration that preceded the current one as well. It is in keeping with his typical method of diverting attention from himself to take advantage of the goodwill of our people and thus establish himself as our new savior who can fix Guam for us. If Guam is broken, as Guamanians, we must seek to repair it ourselves, and I believe it starts with good government. We, the people, share a vested interest in the outcomes of the decisions made by our politicians, so we must be first, we must first be able to judge for ourselves in whom we believe to represent the common good. Ultimately, that decision is made from each person's individual viewpoint, but I believe in the clear vision of the good people of Guam. I count myself as one of those people, but Dr. Joseph will predictably try to convince the public that I am less Guamanian and therefore less for Guam than he is, as he has already tried to convince even me, myself, in writing the first year I came home. I, of course, am just one of many in this regard. At the last hearing, it was stated that Dr. Joseph has won every case against him. That is simply not true. Every board of Allied Health professionals whose function it is to protect the public's interests at the hands of similar professionals has found him guilty every time for various charges, including negligence, incompetence, harassment, and fraud, and usually unanimously. And the makeup of the board was never the same twice. Thus far, he has succeeded in vilifying and having removed many of the appointed volunteer members of the Allied Board. If one is to believe Dr. Joseph, it is at the expense of all these professionals who, in good conscience and in the spirit of public service, dared to perform their appropriate roles in protecting the public. Additionally, Dr. Joseph has charged that the Department of Agriculture has unfairly exhibited prejudice against any other potential quarantine established opening its doors. That is also a false charge, as Dr. Kevin Malakuti of Animal Medical Clinic is in the final stages of approval for quarantine, which he will be opening in a matter of weeks. Specifically, Dr. Joseph has publicly attacked Dr. Poole, the current territorial veterinarian, even at the last hearing, and the legislators before us seem to be misinformed. Dr. Poole never ignored any senator's inquiries, including that of Senator Siniklis. Email correspondence validates this statement. Before our legislators decide to believe Dr. Joseph's claims against the Department of Agriculture and its officers, I would ask them to seriously consider to whom they pledge their allegiance. On the one hand, we have a retired Army Colonel whose experience as the former head of a worldwide veterinary, worldwide military veterinary corps gives him a unique ability to be ideally qualified for the role he plays as a territorial veterinarian in biosurveillance, thus serving to protect our island's borders from threats such as rabies. And on the other hand, we have Dr. Joseph, who actually wrote to the World Health Organization requesting that Guam's rabies-free status be terminated. The potential public health disaster that would unfold should that occur, especially given the very visible stray animal problem we have on Guam, would not be readily controlled. Guam doesn't need a repeated rabies outbreak like the one tragically experienced in 1967. Should such occur in this era, the ramifications for the island could include possible federal quarantine. Thank you.
Thank you, too. Like you, like all of you, I believe in good government. Do you think that if you applied for an occupancy permit, that you would think it's okay that you didn't get a response from that government agency for eight years?
I would think that it is the charge of those people in government, in their function to protect the island, to act in their very best judgment, and I have confidence in the ability of those individuals.
Okay, Dr. Oshiro, I agree with you. I'm not disagreeing with you, other than the fact that you think I seem to be defending somebody. I'm a defender of the process.
Well, I hope that's the case.
And the same individual you think I'm defending, he attacks me too, for the record.
Well, this is...
But it doesn't matter, because what matters to me is that there are processes in place and that everybody is treated the same way under the law. And so if you applied for, from a government agency, never mind agriculture, and I don't want to be specific to an example, but if you applied for an occupancy permit or some kind of permit and didn't get a response, and I'm not, what would your expectation be?
I would hope that you would trust the people who are very qualified to do the job, to do the job and follow through in a reasonable fashion, and I think it's entirely reasonable, given the nature of the person we are dealing with.
Dr. Oshiro?
Yes.
I trust that the people who are supposed to be doing their job will do their job.
That's very good, sir.
So do you believe that the people who are supposed to be doing their job are doing their job if they're not giving feedback, if they're not approving or denying these permit requests?
I believe they are doing their job to the very best of their ability, given the circumstances, the budget issues, and the very low manpower of their department. For the vast amount of work that's required out of the Department of Agriculture, they are doing an excellent job compared to what they could be doing otherwise.
Well, you heard the Director say that by tomorrow morning, she can give a letter denying the permit, right? We heard that, and that she said she'll do that. But did it have to take a status hearing to get the Department of Agriculture to respond to a permit application?
I don't think it's fair to say that they haven't responded. They've responded in ways that are appropriate and they, in the manner, in the manner that this hearing has been called, they have tried to comply.
But, Dr. Oshiro, if that happened to you, if you were opening up a quarantine facility and you requested Agriculture, the territorial vet, to inspect your proposed animal quarantine facility, and you haven't heard from them formally and you've only heard from them through the media, what would your expectation be? Would you say, "Good job"?
I would, I would say...
Because you never got back to me?
No, I would, I would actually expect that if I behaved as the person in question has behaved publicly, that you shouldn't expect an inspection based on the average, an average sort of finding that the perimeter fence is not, not there.
So you admit that there's retaliation going on, on the part of Agriculture to the applicant?
How can I, how can I admit it when I'm not in the Department of Agriculture?
Well, you just said that if an individual behaves...
You asked me, sir, you asked me what I would do, so you are trying to lead me into a response.
I'm not, I'm just listening.
Are you?
I'm just listening.
Are you?
I'm just taking your words and repeating it.
Are you? I would hope that that's what you're doing, is really listening, sir.
Absolutely.
Because the people are listening to you.
And I hope that they are, because what, what we've been able to glean, what I've been able to determine over the last almost an hour that we've been here, and you just said it yourself, I would expect that because of how a certain individual has been behaving, that they should not even deserve an inspection.
Well, sir, in the, in the interest of public safety, which involves rabies, understand, this is a public health threat. This is the reason for quarantine, and the quarantine facility needs to meet those standards. If the character of the person involved is at issue, and it is, because these matters are in court, in process, as we discussed the last time, then that is a very reasonable thing in the spirit of the law to protect the people. It does not make sense to actually, this is me, my own personal opinion, as a person from Guam...
But see, I don't want to be personal here.
No, in my, you asked me from...
I want to be professional.
And that's exactly...
I want all of us to be, Director, I just, I just want you to follow the law. Have I ever once asked you to give a permit, to approve it? Have I ever ordered you to take this particular permit and approve it?
I...
Now, let her answer.
Yeah.
Because I want, I want to restore my credibility and my, and any faith that you may have in me and what we're doing here as a legislature.
I would love to be in that position.
Director, Director, have I ever asked you to approve that permit?
As far as I can remember, no. I have never, you have never approached me to approve somebody's...
Or anybody.
Or anybody's, correct. You have never approached me that, to approve, you know, without going to any legality.
And my, my role has always been about the process. I don't care what the outcome is. So you've heard me, Dr. Oshiro, say, develop a checklist...
Senator, Senator Rispisho, please understand that I have respect for your office. I do have respect for your office, and I understand that there are many viewpoints to consider. I am asking you to consider the viewpoint of the vast majority of the people, the common good, that should be addressed here. There is a reason that Dr. Joseph has been in the media, and he would acknowledge those reasons himself. He gave those reasons himself. As I've stated to you, there are concerns that we don't want government. Government is not working for him, and he's openly stated that he's suing the whole government of Guam. Does that make sense to you, that all of these people are wrong and this one man, who came from where, understands how to fix our island for us? Does that make sense? Does that make sense for us to badger the Department of Agriculture when they are trying in good faith to comply with what you're asking?
Well, if I was going to respond personally to every single person that went after me, we wouldn't be having this status hearing this evening. If I were to say, "Dr. Joseph, I don't want to deal with you because of so many reasons, A to Z to double A to double Z," we wouldn't be here tonight. But, but that's not what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to separate the issue, separate the personalities, get the Director to just, for crying out loud, conduct the inspection. Mr. Schacher, you testified that, that there is a reason why you have a perimeter fence because you just don't want animals to be, you know, to be released. I agree with you, the law says that. But if you go into this particular animal quarantine facility, there are separate entrances. You have to go through a steel door to go inside, to go through another section that's air-conditioned, that's, has a steel door. You go inside, every single quarantine has a cyclone fence, if I can remember, with a patlock. That's why I said, if a dog or cat can escape from that proposed animal quarantine facility, then that's one heck of a dog or cat.
Okay.
But how would the Director know? How would the Director know if she didn't even go inside?
That being the case, Rory, where are the animals transported from? How are they transported? Where are they unloaded? When do they go into the facility? Are they carried into the facility in cages? Is there established procedure?
I'm sure...
By law, on where those animals can be taken out of their containers? If there isn't established procedure by law, if there's one chance in a million, one chance in a million that a distracted employee can think that they can take the animal out and bring them into the facility through a back door or wherever on a leash, then that facility needs to have a perimeter fence. One chance in a million. Are you willing to take that risk with the health and welfare, not of the animals, but of the people on this island? Have you ever seen what happens when somebody contracts rabies? It's not pretty.
Given your passion and what you just said, do you think the current animal quarantine facilities meet those same standards? That a pet owner could not just go up there with a, with a wire cutter, cut the cyclone fence and take their pet out?
If the pet owner were to do that, then the pet owner would be violating the law and would be subject to prosecution under law.
Right, but you just said it could, in the circumstance...
If there's one chance in a million, I said, that an employee would bypass that particular quarantine's personal rules, then it needs to fall under the law. I mean, the Director said it. If you want to change the law for this institution, then change the law for that institution. If you think it meets the requirements and that public safety is not an issue in that case, then change the law. But until then, the law is in place, and my concern is that the law be followed. Because I'm also a person who is all about the procedure. No favoritism. I could care less whether Wise Owl gets a, gets a permit or not, okay? The way the law is written, Joe Farmer could contract a veterinarian and set up a quarantine facility on their farm as long as they follow the law and do it properly. It should be the same for everyone, okay? If the law says you need an eight-foot perimeter fence with barbed wire, then put up an eight-foot perimeter fence with barbed wire. If the law says you need a 20-foot concrete wall, then put up a 20-foot concrete wall if you want to be a quarantine facility, because that is the acceptable procedure and that is a matter of law.
But I just also think that it's good customer service that you...
I agree with you.
You do your due... You do your due diligence, you go through the checklist, you formally tell the applicant that-
I agree with you.
-you don't qualify because you don't have a cyclone fence with barbed wire on the top, and you don't have hot running water, that you don't have dish, you don't, how are they going to know?
Absolutely.
So, Dr. Yashiro, this is why we've been here for the last eight years.
Sir, um, I would just want you to understand that he did actually have a check, basically a, an inspection by Public Health, and they gave, they have those results, and those are available to you. The Public Health did reply to him, I understand. So this is not the government not being fair, and, or, you know, in the, in the general sort of, of way of government, on some level, there will be bureaucracy, and I think we've seen that in the legislature also.
Well, I also haven't seen any evidence that the other animal quarantine facilities have the necessary occupancy permits.
Sir-
And so one is allowed to continue to operate, one's not able to open, so again, Mr. Shocker, there's not an equal application of the law.
By procedure.
By procedure.
By procedure, it needs to be equal to every applicant.
And 30 or so days ago, I was praying very hard, over the last 30 or so days, that Director will come back and present some kind of standard to which those decisions are being made. So maybe we need a little bit more time. So, do you have any questions? Yeah, Senator Yamashita?
Thank you, Senator, Mr. Chair. And so, and so, um, and so that's what I think we need to do. Madam Director, I would suggest that you actually do an inspection. You stop in like you did with the others and just, and just fill this checklist out and then respond to him.
May I speak?
I think that, um, that is the request, and understanding that the perimeter fence is not, as, as required by law, it's not already there, um, that will be notated on your checklist, right? But then all the other stuff, you know, all the other, uh, and indeed, if you've already given him a response, if there already has been an inspection, uh, then you notate that. I think the concern of the committee is, has the facility been, um, has there been attention to the, to the request? And so that's all we need to know, right? And just, and then, that's all. That's all.
I think Dr. Yashiro had a-
Go ahead, Mr. Shocker.
Okay, Mr. Shocker.
I'm going to make one recommendation. If you're going to do a checklist, common sense tells you that certain aspects are going to be more important than other aspects, and there should be pass or fail, just flat-out pass or fail issues involved, and that should be annotated on the checklist. And as a matter of courtesy, the department should be required to notify the recipient of an inspection in advance of the time and date of their inspection, okay? Not just giving them a response, but also giving them a time and date on when they're going to be there and to make themselves available for that inspection. I'm also a businessman. I don't like people just suddenly showing up last minute and saying, "Okay, we're going to inspect." No, we're not. I've got things to do. Call me up, make an appointment, and I'll be happy to oblige you. But before that time, no, we're not. Okay? I think it's a matter, going back to our culture, of just having respect for each other, everybody having respect for each other, and everybody be treated in an equal manner, okay? It's a courtesy that the department, that should, should be undertaking, that they respond to every request, not just requests for inspections, but every request at their department. There needs to be a response to the people who made that request, because we are the taxpayers, we are the voters, we're the owners of this island.
And you, uh, you articulated this process that has to start somewhere and it has to end somewhere.
Absolutely.
And Dr. Palms, when you said that you'd be, it would be a waste of taxpayer money to even conduct the inspection, you know, I'm not going to-
Because it has failed on prima facie evidence.
Sure, no, but I'm saying that, that to, to just give some closure here, the director goes back and, and notifies the applicant that they, they are not being granted for the following reason, because where I'm getting at is due process.
So new process has been held.
But, but I'm-
They had a public health inspection which they failed, which they got notification of. They have not fulfilled those-
I understand, but just give me a sec-
And that count is good enough.
Just give me a second here. If you, uh, applied for your license to practice veterinarian medicine here on the island, and they, they didn't respond to you at all, I mean, how, how are you going to know who to appeal to if you get nothing in writing saying that your, your license has been rejected? So if she were to-
He did get something in writing from Public Health. He got the results of the report.
But it's not Public Health that does the inspection, it's Agriculture.
But he still fails on the same matters, and it has not been, and those matters have not been rectified.
Yeah, but I think we're dealing with the individual responsibilities of those different agencies, right? So-
On, I would disagree then with having an announced inspection versus unannounced. If you're going to deal with public health matters, you need to see how people act when they're not being watched. So an inspection should be unannounced to see how things are happening at that moment.
At least we're leaning, we're moving toward, just do the inspection. Yeah. Dr. Yashiro, do you have closing? I just wanted to allocate, um, a couple more minutes for this panel.
All right. Thank you for the time that you've given us to speak to the issue, and I, I do have respect for your office. It is a very important office, and I-
Never mind my office, how about me?
That remains to be seen.
Because I'm-
I think, I think that this is very important to take it very seriously, and there are real reasons why. There, there are very good reasons in the law there. The law is there, it is in writing, and it is the charge of the Department of Agriculture and the territorial veterinarian to read the law as they see fit. That is their office, and that, that is basically in their, in the interest of protecting the island on many levels. They are acting in good faith, which is the spirit of the law.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for your participation tonight. Director, just, there's just one more panel, yeah. So we'd like to, no, we'd like to call up two more people who've signed up, Dr. Joseph and Benjamin Schiff. And Ruha Sabetti. Okay, in the interest of, um, equal time and equal opportunity, Dr. Joseph, you may proceed.
Senator Yamashita, Senator Rispio, thank you for your time, thank you for your interest. I'm going to try and make my comments regarding what's been said about me rather brief and get on to the status. First off, let's go to the public, Department of Public Health Social Services inspection of my facility, 2005. They came in with a checklist. They filled out a checklist. They told me what was wrong. We corrected it. We applied then to Department of Agriculture because the inspection, um-
Jurisdiction.
Jurisdiction transferred, thank you, from Public Health to Agriculture. Agriculture has refused since 2005 to inspect me. So I don't know how Dr. Palms can say that I haven't met those things when we have met them. We have fulfilled it, we have updated everything that was on that Public Health list. In fact, Public Health had zero problem with my concrete walls, and they commended me for the ability and the structure of them. As for barbed wire, I believe that a concrete ceiling is much superior to barbed wire. And if I can borrow the law from the director, please? Okay?
Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Director. The thing she has highlighted here is the premises of a CQF shall be surrounded by a perimeter fence, not less than. That's a legal term, not less than, meaning you can have something superior to that. And I would put it forth to you that concrete is superior to fence, okay? And it says, she didn't bother reading this part, fencing wire shall be of mesh size of two inches by two inches or less and of no less than nine gauge. Did you measure the fencing at Harper's? That is two and a half by two and a half. That's not Harper's. That's actually, uh, the military quarantine, which is also two and a half by two and a half. You, you admit, you agree with me that it's two and a half by two and a half? You admit, you agree with it? So my perimeter fence, which is concrete, is, does not meet the law, but their perimeter fence that is two and a half by two and a half meets the law? I ask you. I'm just going to leave it at that, I think that says itself. Further in the law, it says that the two, two-by-two fencing is required for animal safety. We just had an animal break its leg at quarantine, okay? It was left there for 120 days, and it was there for at least 90 days with a broken leg, and if they couldn't identify a broken leg, which Dr. Oshira failed to see on leaving the quarantine, um, how can they diagnose rabies? If they can't even see a broken leg? I have pictures here of a dog that just left quarantine. It was in quarantine during the typhoon that had a fan on the gate of the fence. I admit the fan looked unplugged, but the fan was blowing the typhoon on the animal. This animal arrived in my office today with a severe fungal infection. That's caused by being wet, and it just left quarantine with a leaving inspection done by Dr. Oshira. Or one wasn't done. Dr. Oshira is, I believe, the listed veterinarian for Department, for the quarantine. Having an animal like this under her care qualifies as animal cruelty, okay? And you lose your license for your life, I believe, if you are convicted of animal cruelty. I hadn't gave you your chance, okay? So Public Health okayed it. I want, she's been saying that, uh, they observe the law how they see fit, they interpret it. I'm sorry, they're supposed to interpret the law how it's written. Dr. Poole was here saying he interpreted it as is written, and they're all going over it's, uh, no, it's how we interpret it, okay? The 1967 rabies outbreak was due to bad quarantine and customs. An animal got on island that wasn't supposed to. Center for Disease Control will tell you, there's two ways to get rabies on an island like this. One is through bad quarantine, and the other is through reversion to virulence, which means you give a vaccine that becomes hot and the animal has the disease. And in fact, the World Health Association says that all rabies-free islands are not supposed to vaccinate for rabies. Guam is the only rabies-free island in the world that vaccinates for rabies. Now the fact that I send a letter to WHO and I express what's in the law, they're telling me that when I'm bringing up problems that they don't want to face, that this is something that is detrimental to the island. I would say to you, it's detrimental to the island to be vaccinating for rabies. Sooner or later, you're going to have a reversion to virulence. It does happen. Normally, ask anyone who's been in the military, they've seen people get sick from vaccines, okay? When I go to the other countries, and I go to a lot of them, and I bring rabies vaccines to Yap or anyplace, there's a large amount of paperwork I have to do, they don't allow them. They are not allowed, and I have to document every vial, in, out, the animal, and the animals that are vaccinated have to leave.
But since you're required to vaccinate, you vaccinate.
Here in Guam?
Yeah.
I vaccinate and I inform the people about the vaccine and about the law. And if people don't want to vaccinate, I don't force them, I can't force them to do so, okay?
But you just, you follow all the regulations.
I follow the regulations, I also let the people know that this is what the World Health Association says. They're trying to make this about me.
Well, Dr. Joseph, before you continue, can I just ask you for the record if you were contacted at any time by the Director of Agriculture regarding your inspection?
No, and in fact, we dropped a FOIA request off at her office that was supposed to be answered before this meeting, because she said that she put out a inspection form and she put out, um-
Checklist.
A checklist, okay? Now, what was said at this last status hearing was that, one, she was going to produce it and disseminate that checklist a week and 10 days in advance, so everybody could get ready.
Correct.
She failed to do that. Dr. Poole was supposed to do the inspections, not her. I can't, I don't think against her, I don't believe she's qualified, okay? And the other thing is that they were supposed to be a public inspection with the media present, so that nobody would have any arguments about anything. Why are they hiding from the media? Well, I'm going to take you back to Guam Board of Allied Health. They want to tell me all these bad things about Guam Board of Allied Health and all these things that they've said and done. I have relied on one law and one law only with Guam Board of Allied Health, that is the open government law. I have won every time. I don't believe these people are following the open government law, at least not the spirit, they're not being very open, okay? They said that they have charged me with this and that, and I've only run on one on procedural items. Excuse me, violation of my rights, having unfair trials twice, producing falsified evidence, these are more than just simple principles, okay? These are things that are failures of these people, okay? The same basic five people are still on the board. So when he says people have come and gone, come and gone, that isn't necessarily with me. Okay, um, anyways, the FOIA request was put in, she didn't answer it. She has failed to answer them for the last four years she's been in office, three years plus. As for a request to have a inspection done, we have put that in to her numerous times, and we have the documents to prove it. She has refused us, saying that we don't have a license to practice. She has refused us before, saying we don't have a perimeter fence. She's refused us before because we did not have a procedures manual. The reason they go and they inspect with a form and then write down what you are deficient in is so that you can repair those things. When they don't do that, all they are doing is making it so that they can say, "Oh, you didn't do this, you didn't do this, you didn't do this." I stopped playing those childhood games when I got to be a teenager, okay? She talks about a new quarantine. Great, she doesn't even mention what it is. Does it have a sanitary inspection? Well, you can't do a sanitary inspection without that checklist. And she hasn't let anyone evaluate the checklist, and I thought the checklist had to go through the AAA, the Adjudication Act?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily? Okay, I can be wrong on that. But it should be open to inspection and for people to comment on.
But Director, you did say that you were going to make the checklist public prior to conducting the inspection, and then have the media there at the same time, yeah.
Would you like us to play the video?
No, but it's, well, they can't go off of their checklist, they have to go off of the department's checklist, yeah. Okay. So, Dr. Joseph, can we hear from Ben or Ruha?
Okay, I've got a couple of last things on here. Harper Quarantine, prior to us becoming very loud about this, was quarantining animals at the Harper Valley Hospital, not to quarantine. We have this documented on film, we have their workers documented admitting this on film, et cetera. Because we made such a loud noise, they finally moved the animals back to the Harper Quarantine. The law says that the quarantine facility, if it's outdoor, has to be inspected by an engineer and proven typhoon-proof every five years. This has not been done once. She does not have an occupancy permit. She does not have a building permit. The Senate gave Dr. Harper two years to update her facility when the military opened their quarantine. She has failed to put in any documents stating that she wants to build, renovate, or do anything, and she's not allowed to do any of that according to the law until she submits those plans. Where are those plans, Director? Where is, where is the perimeter fence?
Talking about the past when I wasn't around, so I, you know?
It's still that way now, Madam Director. You talk about a perimeter fence. If you take a look at the perimeter fence around Harper, you will notice that it encompasses the building and the boarding facility. There is no perimeter fence separating the quarantine from the boarding facility or the house. the house, or the chickens, or the dogs, or the rats that are running around in the yard. You've heard Mr. Schumacher, I'm sorry if I messed up your name...
Shocker, shocker.
Uh, I apologize, but, um, it state that he has had friends leave totally infested with vermin. Okay? This is against the law there. Okay? Now, the one that really gets me, though, is they're talking about my concrete wall stops them from doing anything. We have just proven that the perimeter fence, both at Anderson and at Harper, is against the law. And, what? And Harper does not have a full perimeter fence. This is a double standard. Now, as for Guam losing its rabies status, Guam law, in their quarantine law, says, "We can only authorize countries or states that have, as rabies-free, as those that have a proper, well-done, et cetera quarantine." Since Guam's quarantine does not meet the law, Guam's quarantine has not had a sanitary inspection or anything, then our quarantine here makes it so that we are not rabies-free according to our own law. Let me rephrase it, we do not have rabies-free status according to our own law that we place on other countries and other places. Is it wrong for me to bring this up and bring this in public? I don't believe so. But these people are so afraid of losing the money, the jobs, positions, their pride, that all they can do is personally attack me. These are things that people need to know. And if telling people about this makes me less Guamanian, then Angel Santos was not And I would like to leave, that is my final comment.
Okay. Thank you. Who would like to go next? Okay, Mr. Betty?
How's Senators? Senator Respecho, Senator Yamashita, thank you for your time tonight. I'm here just based off of Harper's quarantine. I'm in full support of having options for civilians in a quarantine choice. And just in addition to what Dr. Joseph was saying, I read the FOIAs of Director Tiedegui just recently, and she did include a checklist. But another thing that was requested was the inspection form that was done at Harper's that she said she promised she would do. But the most recent inspection that we, or that was received was from the 12th of March 2014. And I just, I just want to say that from March 2014, until May of 2003, the inspection of Harper Valley Quarantine was, hasn't changed. There's no fix, there's, there's the same demerits for a whole year, especially about the fencing and other things that have not been repaired. And, you know, dogs have been injured, there's obvious cases of animal abuse, and just the fact that nothing has been done is really upsetting, and I don't know if either of you have seen the video of the dogs that were in the typhoon just recently. No animal should have to go through that, and if anyone's okay with an animal being left out in the rain, you know, like, we're all in our homes, we're all safe, but the dogs at quarantine aren't. And Dr. Poole gets paid $100,000 a year, and that's all taxpayer money. And it's just upsetting that he cannot regulate what goes on with our animal health care. And in his contract, he's supposed to devote his full time and best efforts just within the law to help prevent zoonotic diseases and to just have oversight of all animal services here. And in a news report that was about in 2012, he said that, "If I had six guys, 50% more, I could do 50% more work. Four guys cannot keep up with the demand." This is about boonie dogs. And he says, "Of course, I propose additional staff, and in 2006, when the politicians were getting chased all over by dogs, they promised two more officers a year until we were fully staffed." That ever happened. We obviously still have a boonie dog problem, and his contract is up until 2017. So, I'm not happy about him being paid $100,000 a year, when obviously, there's been no improvements with quarantine. If a fence can't be fixed, quarantine needs to be shut down, or they need to be open to having different, different options. Like, for example, WISL's quarantine, why can't they make amendments to the law? Why can't he put his time into making different regulations if that's what his contract is to do? And if he's being paid $100,000 a year, if that was deducted, he could, like, $40,000 was taken away, you could hire two more people to help out and to do other things. I just don't think that he's doing his job. And another thing that was also in the FOIA request was the occupancy permit for Harper's quarantine. I attended, I believe, the first oversight hearing, and it was promised that the occupancy permit was established, but we FOIA requested from Department of Public Works, and they said they don't have anything. The exact letter says, "It is with regret that we are not able to provide you any documents to your request. In the near future, should we come across any documents regarding Harper's quarantine, we will be more than happy to contact you." So, in, just in regards to, that was August 6th, that was just, what, five, six days ago? And just, I don't know if Director Tiedegui or Dr. Poole has really followed up with what you were asking, Senator. I, we FOIA requested the report that she told KUAM News happened, and it wasn't in the FOIA request. Nothing in the past few months was in the FOIA request. So, that was, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
And if she doesn't obey the FOIA request, I thought she said she wants to obey the law.
I got one here. Okay, Ben?
Senator Roy Respecho, Yamashita, thank you for taking time out of your day to address this issue. I'm gonna try to be as fast as possible, as there's a lot I want to go over. One thing I want to mention is all this information I have found out personally from doing FOIA requests. I have been to the Department of Administration, I've been to Department of Public Works, I've been to Department of Agriculture, and even Department of Public Health at certain times. But the first thing that I noticed when I did FOIA request to Department of Administration, just to point this out, that Dr. Poole has been working for us for, or for the government of Guam to seven to eight years, and according to the Department of Administration's file, there's no one under Dr. Poole that even works for the government. The government's been spelling his name wrong. It's P-O-O-L-E, as letters he's addressed me. When I FOIA request from the Department of Administrations, which I'll provide you guys a copy from, they say no one works there, under that name. So, I just want to address that. Like Ruha Sabetti mentioned, at Department of Public Works, that we just FOIA requested last week, there are no sanitary permits, there are no occupancy permits for Harper Valley quarantine at all. So, I don't understand how they are still able to comply with the law in that manner. For Department of Agriculture, I have personally tried to get a meeting with the Director for over a year. I've videotaped me asking Jackie, the head receptionist, to get a meeting, so maybe we could address issues that might be other demerits. Once again, the reason why we do want to get the inspection with the criteria that she made inspected is so if there are any other demerits that we may have besides the fence, we can address all the demerits at one time to fix it and comply with the law. Technically, I do want to mention that no amendments need to be made to the law, as it says, "It shall be not less than." So, I hope the Senators look into that as well. Once again, Ruha mentioned that Dr. Poole, his salary, I FOIA requested, actually both their salary, Dr. Poole's paid $100,000, Merity Tiedegui is paid $60,000, and we are paying our taxpayer money, so I just want to say that I hope they achieve the job that's appropriate in their contract for what they're getting paid for. Once again, I just want the pass or fail, even if, whatever, for all the demerits, so I can fix anything. As for Harper's quarantine, I'll get on. I do like a lot of the stuff that Mr. Shocker was mentioning about what, how, the procedures of quarantine. So, today, actually, I brought my procedures for WISL quarantine, and I would hope that the inspection form that the Director makes from Department of Agriculture goes through things, making sure that the quarantine has a typhoon plan. I'm sure you saw the video, I personally went down to Harper Valley Quarantine during a typhoon. I couldn't even stay on side for 10 minutes, I can't imagine the three animals I documented in those cages being left there. One of the owners actually contacted me through Facebook, her name is Crimsonia. I've contacted her quite some time, and like Mr. Shocker was saying, what happens if you move an animal? What happens if you do all this stuff? Well, according to Crimsonia, I hope you do contact her, sir, her dog was moved into an inside facility after she complained to the quarantine facility, I wasn't sure, but letter E on the new checklist says, "Temporary removal or transfer of a quarantine dog or cat from its assigned kennel is prohibited unless authorized by the department." So, I'm assuming the department does have documentation of them moving Crimsonia's dog, which I hope to FOIA request in the near future. Some of the procedures that I would hope, like I said, one would be a typhoon plan, general procedures, reporting, reports to the Department of Agriculture, record-keeping, release from quarantine, items not permitted in quarantine, a contingency plan, death and birth in quarantine, handling animals in quarantine, rules for visiting have already all been established for WISL Animal Hospital's quarantine, because I'm assuming this stuff would be in the inspection. Because how could you pass a quarantine facility without having a contingency plan? Without having these stuff set in motion in case something happens, in case of that one in a million chance that Mrs. Shocker was talking about? And I do want to mention that every single employee at WISL Animal Hospital that would be qualified to work for a quarantine is a certified veterinary technician, it is trained in animal handling and in animal behavior. So, I, I agree with Mr. Shocker completely with who's handling these animals. Are they trained when they're moving them, when they're transporting them? We have a transportation form, we have all these forms already ready for our inspection when they do inspect. So, I would hope the other quarantine would have some type of procedural stuff that could be looked over by Department of Agriculture, that would be necessary. A lot of this stuff needs to be addressed, and we've been trying to bring more attention to it. It is for the betterment of this island, and I really do believe you Senators can see through any personal thing and just go stick by the law and stick with what's best for the island.
Director, thank you, Ben, and Dr. Joseph, and Ms. Ruha Sabetti. Director, a lot of things have been said tonight on both sides of the issue. Are you aware if your department has on file the quarantine procedures for the, for the two quarantine facilities that are currently in operation? And a proposed quarantine facility procedures for the one that you've mentioned would be online in about two weeks?
Dr. Poole, you know, he's the veterinarian, and I'm sure he has in, on file, but I was not able to pull out something like that, that he has. And I pause, you know, him for bringing that, it's something that brought in my mind that I, you know, when I get back, I want to make sure that, you know, we're in line with...
Well, how soon can you provide the committee with the copy of each quarantine facility's procedures?
Procedures, rules and regs, so, okay? Like I say, as soon as, you know, Dr. Poole, I'll talk with Dr. Poole, he's my veterinarian, and he's the specialty, and he's the certification on all these subjects, I'll get back to him, and he will be, you know...
Do you think we can get something by Friday? Close of business Friday? I mean, you should already have it on file, and here's another example of a question I'm asking you that you have. If you don't have the document, and I expect that before your deadline, you would tell me that you don't have these procedures on file.
Okay, like I say...
Because, because what I'm interested in is one standard, right? Pursuant to whatever the laws are, so I just don't want to see that each quarantine facility has their own procedures of...
Yes, okay, like I say, you know, Dr. Poole is right now in, he's, you know, under some...
But I'm sure he has a secretary.
Yes, so, we'll get back to you, Senator, as soon as we can.
Okay, the other thing, are you, are you aware of, of what happened in the last typhoon, where animals were subjected to heavy rain and wind, and, I mean, I've had to entertain an animal, you know, pet owner, their, her dog was in quarantine, and the dog was subjected to heavy rain and heavy wind, and there was a video that was posted on Facebook that described that entire incident.
No, Senator, I wasn't aware of that, because, you know, I was so busy with the indigenous fishing raft, plus the farmers, and all of that, but we'll, we'll get back to you.
So, my question is, where do people go to file complaints?
With, like, stuff like this?
You have a, you have, you have a video showing of how...
You should have a complaint form already.
Well, on your procedures, you have a complaint form, but, I know...
They have, I think we have...
But I'm saying, from the Director, I'm asking the Director the question, guys. So, where do people go to file a complaint?
In my office, there's a, right there in the front, the animal health section that they should go to.
And then, do you have a procedure to investigate the complaints?
Correct, you're right, yes.
Because already, from this hearing, you have, I imagine, two complaints. One, a complaint of an animal that purportedly was just released from quarantine, and the second complaint is animals that were subjected to some conditions the last, yeah?
Yes, like, I didn't hear that, so, apparently, they didn't complain, so, but like I said, you know, it's something that I should take seriously to go back and address it if there's any...
I just want for the public that's listening, if they have any issues, that there is a way that they can address these issues procedurally?
Correct. We do have that, complaint forms and all that stuff in the department, that they can come to us.
May I ask what happens when we turn in the complaint form?
She just said they would investigate it.
Yeah, we have three animal officers in our department that goes out and investigates, you know, and they'll do citation, or they'll bring that, you know...
During your administration, you've gotten letters from Ms., Dr. Meadows, the justices, and a whole bunch of other people that I know have put in letters to your office about the cruelty that's gone on at quarantine. What investigations have been done on those?
Like I say, it was, this is la, just last week, or two weeks ago, there was this, you know, the, somebody that has a dog that was killed by another dog. So, our procedures, usually, we take that dog that did some, you know, put it up in quar, in the animal, the game, game, where they kept the animals, the dogs, and Dr. Poole is the one to assess if the animal has to be moved, you know, put to sleep or so. So, Dr. Poole is the one that addresses that, you know...
Before we dismiss this panel, I, I want to ask if you've ever made any attempts to ask the Attorney General to interpret the requirements of this not, not less than eight-foot perimeter, eight-feet perimeter fence?
Well, I do communicate with the Attorney General, in fact, just last week...
But on that specific question?
On that specific question, about the fencing? Well, not specifically, I haven't addressed it with, because I thought it was already in place, you know, so that's why I did not ask the opinion of the Attorney General about the, about the fencing. But it wouldn't hurt if I, you know, approach him about that matter, to see whether that's, you know...
Because usually, when laws are written, right, you provide a minimum standard, and if you can meet or exceed that standard, then, good for you.
And I thought that, you know, when they develop that law, or implement that law, they have the opinion...
But I just want to make sure that it's not subject to interpretation based on existing relationships or lack thereof. Ben?
I, I don't see how there's any way it isn't, because their fence does not meet the law, it is not two by two, so...
And Dr. Poole has even recognized that? Yeah, for yours.
It's actually the first thing in his inspection form for over the... It's actually the first thing in his inspections form for over the years. He mentions the fence every single time.
See, this is why I wanted the checklist to be developed, that all the stakeholders can agree by which standard people are going to be judged on. And this is why we said that you should conduct these inspections with the media there. I'm sure, I mean, this is a community interest. There are a lot of people in this room, and I'm sure half are for this issue, and then the other half are for the next issue on the agenda. But there's an interest in this issue, because the people want to know, are these guys being treated the same way pursuant to the existing laws, right? And so here, you have a lot of questions. If the standard is not less than, and then yet they've purportedly exceeded that, I just want to protect you, Director, also, to make sure that you believe that you're doing your job and you're making decisions based on the law, based on one standard. And that's why I really want to see copies of their procedures, so that we can, at the next status hearing, we can see if every person is being treated the same way. So do you have anything else to add before we-
I have a couple of things. First off, we gave Director Tigrey a copy of this three years ago, on electronic format. Second off, this inspection demerit checklist, it doesn't say what the demerits are or how they are arranged or accredited. It doesn't say what a U or a four or a C means. I understand U means- Unsatisfactory. I don't know what a four is. I don't know what a three is. And a rating system is supposed to be open and very easily interpreted. I've seen inspection forms from the other places, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Social Services, et cetera. This is not an easy-to-use form or an easy-to-reference form. And I would compare that to the one we gave them. And basically, this is going down pretty much the same thing we gave them as a format to do. So we did their work for them. And we have provided this to them. And all we ask is a little credit that we did it. And they can alter and change it. We're very willing to work with them on it. And we've been saying this for eight years. Also, Director, you have that inspection form from Public Health? Yes? Okay. On here, does it say anything about my walls not being sufficient? Right, and that was back then. But anyways, my big thing that I wanted to comment on actually was, you asked them to bring in documents at the last status hearing. They were supposed to have all these documents, and Dr. Poole promised you he could have them ready for you. They're not here. They're all the forms that, quite frankly, will show Public Health, I mean, sorry, Department of Agriculture Director, Dr. Poole, Dr. Oshiro have not been doing their jobs. And they want, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. They want to yell at me about being the type of person that does something? These are people that are simply not doing what the law tells them to. I'm sorry.
The last thing I did want to mention, sorry not to interrupt, are the quarantine still has dogs in it. And it needs to be addressed. If it's not up to standard and dogs are still there right now, we are putting our island at risk.
And I actually did forget one last thing. For the entire time this director has been in office and the entire time Dr. Poole has been the territorial veterinarian, because they didn't have an inspection form, that automatically means no proper inspection was done. That means as of June 30th of every year, each facility is no longer licensed. It doesn't have a sanitary permit. Our eloquent Chairman of the Chamoros Nation mentioned that we need to have standards like that. Well, it is written in the law. Every June 30th, they have to get a new sanitary permit. Now, we have had hundreds, if not thousands, of people go through in the nine years since then. Not one of these people has gotten what they paid for. And this is really the thing that bothers me the most. You have hundreds or thousands of people coming to Guam that are paying for quarantine, paying for real quarantine, paying to have their animals properly taken care of, and they are being housed in a facility that doesn't even come close. One, it doesn't have a sanitary permit. Two, it doesn't even have an occupancy permit. Who is going to reimburse these people? Is this theft by deception? Is this theft by something? Or is it just simply morally wrong? And I would actually put forward that as of today, this island should stop importing animals that do not come from rabies-free areas. There is no legal quarantine for them to go to unless they go to the military. But the military hasn't had that same sanitary inspection, so they can't go there either. So if we want to uphold the law of Guam, that means if it doesn't come from a rabies-free area or from Hawaii quarantine, they legally cannot enter Guam. And I think we've established that here today.
Okay, Director, I'm going to give you an opportunity to summarize what you're supposed to provide to the committee. Can you talk into the mic? Because people can't hear.
Number one is to, you know, to give him an answer or a letter addressing, you know, why we're not able to inspect his facility. And that was the reason. And then I was hearing that we should get the media with us.
But before you go forward, what's the basis of your denial?
Yes, that we are going to give him. Well, you know, I promise that we will-
You're going to do the checklist?
Based on the checklist, yes.
Are you going to go inside and inspect the facility based on the checklist? Or are you just going to drive by and say, oh, he didn't put up a fence yet?
But like I said, that would be the first thing that I would do, respond to them, why his facility was denied, or, you know, so forth and so on.
But what is the basis of your denial is my question?
Well, like I say, you know, I could, but I'm not going to let them know when I'm coming by. I'll just, you know, because like Shocker said, that, you know, if you let them know-
Okay. But you're going to have, but then the door is locked, I imagine. So you'd have to tell them-
To, yeah, or maybe, you know, Guam culture, that should respect its others, should give them a call. To give them a call.
I'll personally make myself available at any time for you, ma'am.
You wouldn't have a problem with the director showing up at any time?
She can show up anytime she wants. Our facility's been ready for eight years.
Open the door, I want to inspect this place.
Yes, sir. And the only thing I did want to mention is- Thank you. Thank you, I really appreciate it. The one thing I want to express my greatest concern is, I just want to know everything that is wrong, so I can fix everything at one time. Because if I know everything that's wrong, I'll fix everything one time.
So Director, you're going to go there and you're going to surprise them? And you're going to say, I have a checklist? That's why I'm repeating myself, because I'm tired. Dr. Yashiro? I'm not, please, I'm, I'm asking her to repeat what her commitments are going to be.
To visit their facility, that's all, you know, my commitment. Visit the facility, and then from there, I'll determine whether it's passed the standard of, you know, our checklist or not. That's it.
And write him a letter.
Yeah, and write him a letter. Write him a letter.
So you can tell me everything that's wrong with my facility at one time, correct? Yes?
Well, I have to go home and determine, you know, I mean, go back to the office and determine really what the issue is.
Wait, let me just back up here. I want to summarize, you know, Dr. Yashiro left this hearing because she was frustrated. And I just don't want anything to be miscommunicated. Director, how did you inspect these other three facilities? Did you have, how did you inspect these other three facilities? Could you please speak into the mic, ma'am?
I took Dr. Poole with him, because, like, with me, because, you know, like I say, he's the certified veterinarian on Guam. He's gone to school for several years, and he should know better.
Nobody's questioning his qualifications and his credentials.
I have to take him along, because, you know, I'm not qualified.
Did you have a checklist?
Yes, we have the checklist with us, you know, and then just-
So when you go to Waisau?
So we bring the checklist also.
Okay. But you're not, don't tell them you're going to go there. Just go there and say, I want to inspect your place. You have an application with the Department of Agriculture, and I want to inspect your facility, and I'm going to use the same standard. So you're going to use the checklist? You're going to go through the checklist, and when the law says the eight-feet-
If it's not there, then I'll demerit.
Okay. And then the other things about separate hot water and separate all that, then-
Demerit, yes, okay.
Then with Dr. Poole, you go down the list, right? No, I'm just, yeah. But for the other three inspections, Dr. Poole was with you?
Yes.
So for this-
Because, you know, I cannot go into the base without somebody with a-
No, but for this inspection, are, I mean, if you do a test case, you want to have the same controlled environment, so that whatever outcome you have, no one is going to criticize you of being prejudiced or biased, so. And so you would go and you would, with Dr. Poole, using the same-
I don't promise Dr. Poole, because I haven't asked him yet, okay? I have not asked him his permission to do that.
Well, he reports to you, right?
But he reports to me, and of course, I have the authority to direct. That's why I'm a good director.
So I just want to get something clear. You're making the commitment that you would inspect Waisau.
Yes.
But if the inspection is required to be done by the territorial vet, and that he refuses to inspect the place, we're going to be in the same situation.
So like I say, you know, I'll have to get this permission and ask him.
May I offer a suggestion? If Dr. Poole doesn't want to do it, why don't we get somebody from Department of Public Health and Social Services, who does sanitary inspections of restaurants and things? This really is no different, okay? And have them do it. And I would actually encourage them to do it on all the facilities, so that we can say that this is as unbiased as possible, okay? Because quite frankly, I still haven't heard how the perimeter fence that even Dr. Poole writes for over one year in his inspection reports at Harper is, doesn't meet the standards, how you can keep that place open when you close mine because you don't like my perimeter fence.
And you know, we're going to be going into a budget session tomorrow, and I'm going to ask the support of my colleagues to probably provide for an administrative provision in the Budget Act that would require that these inspections be done by Public Health.
And I really applaud moving it back to Public Health. Thank you very much.
Unfortunately, just so you know, even if the budget is passed, it won't take effect till October 1st, so we're, but in the meantime, we're going to have to really go through all the current procedures. But in the meantime, the law says agriculture conducts the inspection. Director, you said that you would go there with the checklist. And then after you conduct your inspection with the territorial vet, you're going to see when he's available. You would then, did you send a letter to the other three places telling them that their inspection was approved?
No, we have the checklist, you know.
But, no, but you gave, so they got their permit? How did the other three places know that they were approved? You signed off on the-
Yeah, the checklist to the checklist, you know. And I have seen, you know, document where it says that he has been to Harper, you know, before my time.
And so the last time, it was your timeline. When do you think you can conduct the inspection on this remaining proposed facility?
And we can expect the same-
Thirty minutes, I mean, 38 days, because I have all the issues that I have to address now, you know.
Excuse me. They managed to squeeze this in, not following the rules that were guided by here last time. Putting it in public, doing a public inspection. The other facilities are already approved. There's no reason this should be delayed at all. She is playing favoritism, and I will call it out at that, okay? And I think the people here will agree with me.
I'm not, you know, favoritism.
Then how can you explain?
But I promise you that I'll come around, okay? That's all. I'll be around.
Can you do it in five working days? I think that's reasonable. You only have one to conduct. And then part of the 30 days, part of the 30 days was because you had to do the checklist, so you already have a template.
As for the favoritism, I had to do all of this research myself with FOIA requesting these documents. I believe you went to all the other facilities and contacted them, ma'am.
And besides that, you know, every time we do a FOIA request for them, they don't pick it up. So it's just, so many times they have requested a FOIA for that.
Okay, I just want some resolution for this. So by Friday?
This is too early, Senator?
No, not this Friday, the next Friday.
Okay, next Friday, yes.
Because I said five working days, because I want to schedule the next status hearing already pursuant to the open government law.
Can I ask what the penalty will be for her not following through on this promise?
Well, I think we're exercising in good faith here, and I understand your frustration, right? But I think we're getting somewhere. It's a process.
And again, the process is blatantly-
Being ignored.
Being ignored. And I'll just go back to the fencing issue.
No, I assure you that because we're conducting this in a very open and transparent fashion, I assure you, the public pressure will determine whether or not the existing quarantine facility is compliant.
So we're, I'm assuming with your statement, sir, that the inspections forms that they've done on the other facilities will also be open to the public?
Absolutely, and those decisions are also challenging. And in the meantime, Director, I'm going to assist you by writing to the Attorney General and asking him to interpret the existing law.
Can I ask you a question? Is it criminal to falsify documents like this?
Of course.
It is criminal for them not to put down what is actually going on?
Well, what are you, yeah, what are you, what are you referring to? I mean, I just, as a general matter, right? It's not a lawyer, but as a general matter, you shouldn't be falsifying-
The only question I had was, because according to the KUAM news report that she gave us in my FOIA request, was that they did the inspection on the 25th, which was right before the typhoon. And if they got inspected and they were passed, then I want to know how they passed, because one, the fence, and two, the animals were left there during the typhoon. So we were just questioning, how could they have passed a legal inspection form when they leave dogs outside in typhoons?
I didn't, you know, when I went there, I didn't see those animal like that when I was down there. I didn't see a-
It's your job to notice these things, ma'am.
Well, we're, I think, I know, understand the level of frustration here in this room, but I could tell you that I think we're getting somewhere. Director, I thank you for your willingness to apply the same standard. And sometimes, you know, we just have to let the past be the past, and every day is a new day. And tomorrow morning-
Life has to go on.
Yeah.
Life has to go on. And I'm trying my effort.
But I will not let go until I'm convinced that you've treated everybody the same way. If you're going to mistreat everybody, then mistreat- No, I'm saying if it's someone's intent to mistreat someone, then mistreat everybody. If you're going to treat someone nice and then the other person not nice, it's, this is why we're not coming to a resolution, so.
It's not my intention to.
Okay. I have some work to do. Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Okay, the next, thank you, Director, just, the next, the next item that we're going to discuss is the status of Public Law 29-127. You know, I want to hear, we want to hear from the director on a status update. We have a list of people that signed up that, it's probably over two pages. I don't know if we have to go through every single person who signed up, or if the same things are going to be repeated, but let's get a report from the director. And if you guys are not satisfied with the report, then anybody is welcome to come and present an update, okay? Otino, please join. And Jay. And this is not the last time we're going to have a status hearing on this issue. I mean, it took eight years, right? Could you just at least give us eight weeks? Eight days? By the way, I've shared with Senator Yamashita that for tonight's purposes, we're not going to discuss what you guys are proposing, because you still have to conduct your own public hearings through the AAA process. But we just want some assurances that you guys are moving forward together. Okay? Director?
Yeah, and I think I have said, and now I'm going to have Tino.
No, I want, no, I- Director, please.
Okay, half a day.
I think this is a good review.
Yeah, Director, you're recognized at this time, yeah.
Yes, yeah. Thank you, Honorable Rory, for giving us the opportunity to give you an update report on what's going on with indigenous fishing rights, and for Eileen Yamashita for your participation this evening. Well, half a day, please enclosed, you know, in our report, the copies of the sign sheet of the representatives of the indigenous fishing task force who have been coming to the department, and we have been dialing. And so, please note that we as a group hope to move forward with participation from the various native group. We have been meeting regularly since early July in an effort to complete development of the rules and reg to meet the requirement of Public Law 29-127. At the initial meeting of July 17, 2014, the group was informed that in order to adopt the regulation, we should have to follow the Administrative Adjudication Act. The Department DAR has been meeting regularly with the representatives of the indigenous aborigines group. We hope to finalize the draft, at which time we'll proceed into the AAA process. We have a purchase order already ready to execute to announce the public hearing for the meeting. Subsequent to the public hearing, the department will submit the drafts and regulations of the Attorney General's office as per our administrative procedure. And upon receipt of the review document, it will be submitted for Legislature Secretary for Adoption. The department remains concerned that some of the issues, the issues of nondiscriminatory remains inherent in the new regulation. Should the rules and reg violate the requirement of receiving federal aid funding, millions of dollars in federal funding may be jeopardized. Thank you for your much patience and consideration in our progress, and your report.
Okay.
This is our report.
Yeah, and we'll cross that bridge when we get there, but you know, we're trying to bifurcate the process, but-
We're moving along, we just want to let you know that we're moving along, and we have people-
So do you have a target date of when your first public hearing is going to be?
I think that's my cue now.
Okay.
Again, my name is Celestino F. Argud. I am the Chief of the Division of Aquatic and Wildlife Resources. Just to capital, reiterate and sort of emphasize what the Director has reported on. If you go to, we've submitted a document package on page 17 as a summary of our meetings that we've been having, and I think since the last oversight, that kind of kicked us into motion, so to speak. And I think these guys have become my friends now. And I mean, the indigenous group, we've actually- we've actually turned it into a real working group, and basically, it's been a work in progress.
Well, Director, what you've done, and Tino and Jay, you've empowered them, and you gave them their voice back.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, and so you did give me, give us a copy of where you're at, but I, you know, I don't want to, we don't want to paint the process.
Sure. We understood.
We want to respect whatever you guys come up with through the public hearing and the people process, and so we're not, it's still a very difficult issue. Don't get me wrong.
Sure.
But at least people are talking to each other.
Sure, yeah. I think as far as the deadline, initially, when we had met back in June, I mentioned a 90-day public notice, and I think that's actually 10 days prior, right? It's 10 days prior, so it's actually a little less, or a little more-
Five.
I checked AAA, and it is 10. So from the day we, I suspect it's probably going to be-
Well, I'll tell you what. Just so we don't have any false expectations, just surprise all of them.
I would do that.
And the sooner the better.
Just to also emphasize a little more, we've discussed this with Trini and the rest of the group multiple times, and I said, "We could beat this horse dead if we want to, but let's get it done." And so we're probably aiming for one or two more meetings on the regs itself, and then after that, we go into the AAA process, basically. So we're real close to that point, as far as that goes. But anyway, if anything, if you look at the summary on page 17, it just summarizes to date what we've gone, and where we want to go as far as the final process, yeah? And so I think we're moving along.
Well, let me take the opportunity to join Senator Yamashita and thank the Department of Agriculture, and thank Trini Torres and the Jacksons, and all of you guys that have been there every step of the ways. Vice Speaker Ted Nelson, thank you also. And I know you're doing this through Auntie Lola's memory, in honor of her also. So-
Thank you, Senator.
So anybody who signed up, do you wish to, and Abba Rose, we have to acknowledge you as well. See to a small city, yeah. Oh, did you, anybody want to speak on this particular issue? Because we're going to have a status hearing in about 10 days again. Okay, so let me, let's dismiss this panel.
Okay.
Director, you can just stay there since you're comfortable. Okay. I didn't write, I didn't see him. Talajero, when has noticed?
First of all, Senator Rory Fisher and Senator Yamashita, thank you again for acknowledging this once and for all. When I look at our culture and how we look at and interpret the laws, and I look at the inheritance of what I've been taught, and it's very supportive of supporting my children as they grow up, I teach them each and everything that we know. And in looking at everything that I see today, how a value of the dollar versus, and I say that is because, why am I here today or tonight? To try to make an effort that is heritage to us for the longest time. I felt I was disrespected. I felt that I was, just like I'm not there. And I feel for our people, looking at the various things that are cultural to them, and preserving them, and then taking a value of the dollar and try to apply for grants. And the specification of all this, why is it that we're here today trying to explain the rights within our island as we see it culturally? But we let others do their cultural perspective and show it. I feel embarrassed for my children. I feel embarrassed because as a senior person in my family, I felt each and every one of us, what happened to the dialogue of respect for each and everything that we believe in culturally. I see cultural affairs that are out there that has been appropriated for non-appropriated funds and stuff like that. But when I, let alone when I want to expose myself and my children, I fail to hesitate because a jet ski can roll in front of me, and they were given the permit inside a preserve area, while I look in front of a shoreline where I used to walk with my father and my grandfather, and here today. It is very disrespectful that our culture is being orchestrated in this way. What are we standing for as tomorrow's if, now that we have to sit down and try to have a dialogue of the laws that are supposed to be applied, and only one word, preserve area? Balmhole, which is the Punggol in PT, Sumai, all the way around the island, when I look at it, we used to share within our families and share our cultural perspective when it comes to the weekend, when it comes to the weekdays. We are fishermen out there, going through their waters, but at this point in time, have permitted commercial permits. And when I come out there, I'm supposed to be arrested because I'm going to swim across. And a boat that goes across is better than the one that is swimming across. And at my age, even as I have cancer here, I find the time to use that effort to just go and do what I used to do. Now I'm asking you, Senators, to hear this, because this is a call for my ancestors, this is a call for this westernization as it opens an avenue for others to come in and try to look at the cultural perspective that within our schools, they show that, UOG cultural fair show that. And I myself, as I go to Epo, or any beaches that are preserved, we're often told we're the one who's destroying these corals. But when a jet ski at a flat surface, which is almost six inches, a jet ski rolls out there. And I ask myself, as my grandchildren ask me, "Doctor, why are you being arrested for something that is always heritage, and now that you show us we can't do it?" It's because these people in the business industry are in front of us before the culture that is heritage to us, and who we are, what are we acknowledging? Are we acknowledging the respect that one who comes in from a different island to be able to see, and yet we use towards an interpretation of providing culture? I never say negative things about preservation of preserve area. But in looking at the years and years that was lied to us, where five years was applied, and then until today, it's still close. But a vendor comes in and is able to flourish, a different origin can flourish and earn this money, but yet me, or others that are fishermen out there, we are contained. And that hurts Senator Rory Fisher and Senator Yamashita. That hurts because when one revenue is processed by the value of the dollar, by the permits that you sent out there for these people to get, I am sitting down, and I can't do what I used to do. And it makes me cry, and it makes me so frustrated that today, I ask each and every one of you by the laws that is applied. I've seen T-shirts that are written in different ways because they want the preserve area. I don't mind that. But how long does a preserve have to stand? And I see some other negative areas here that are so flat surface. Why not take that preserve and apply it there where it needs to be refurbished and plant these things in there? It is because this is what we see today. And I look at it, I'm already afraid to show how to, show children how to weave nets, make spear gun. Go and let them do the things that we were taught to do, and show them that they can become self-sufficient. But yet I see from Koreans to different ethnic groups that has been given permits, and in front of my eyes, I would be told, "Don't go there because the jet ski operation is there." Now how do we dictate these laws that apply to the preserve area? And how long does a preserve area has to be there? And to me, today that I see this, I went the other day to Peti Balmhole, and I was asked by a mayor, "Do you have a permit?" And I told him, "Mayor, that's where I live. That's my grandmother's house right there. This is their land. Since I was small, I've been paddling canoes, canoes that were built the old ways. And we went out there and we became subsistence because we are able to provide our children. But now, when I look at the kind of model that is being used today to fund grant monies and stuff like that, and I'm being in a sinkhole where I used to fish and where I followed my grandfather, and now my grandchildren would ask me, or my great-grandchildren, ask me, "Why can't we go there, Doctor? Why can't we fish there? Why is those divers out there? Why is those jet skis out there?" For me to look at my grandchildren and all the other childrens around, and I see these people go out there fluently to use different kind of apparatus, and I as an elder, and as well as the others that are here tonight, I hope this is a message to each and everyone in our island that we all have to be treated fair, and that a law has to be in place that coordinates and regulates these things, but should not influence on the cultural heritage of the indigenous rights of anybody, whether in what island or what place they come from. It is us, we are the tomorrow's, whether we are to have tomorrow's Filipinos, we're all together. We have the same culture. And I see these things in front of me, and as I walk, I had a family gathering, Senator Rory Fisher, and they all came to look at the things that we used to do, but yet we sat in front of this beach, which is Epo Beach, and we can no longer walk out there, but we see the flourishing of the tourist industry, which that's fine. But who's showing cultural perspective, who? And I want a message that's, I hope each and every one of you will pass this regulate, regulate these things that we're asking, so that it is recognized, so that we've been recognized, so that I, I hope, and I'm still here, and as well as the other elders, that we still go in and out, but yet we have, I'm one of them, and I'll be honest with you. Why should I hide on a federal place that says, "Do not enter," but yet it says protective area? Then a cruise ship, a tourist comes in and can walk that way, and I cannot walk this way. This is why Senator Rory Fisher, that today I made sure- This is why Senator Royce Fisher, that today I made sure that I wanted to be, to have that energy. Because I am one who believes that we can still get together and give us back what we deserve because we're not asking for money. We're only asking for our indigenous rights, not by the value of the dollar, but the value of each and everyone here as they sit and wait for the turn. And I'm gonna ask you this again. I hope you talk to your colleagues, whether whoever's side it is. But it is time. It is time that you show us that if we, you are really into this cultural preservation of our culture and our heritage. I will continue this water energy I have to teach my children and let them absorb so that they can absorb this that should one day they don't have a job, there would be food on the table because they can be able to translate the things that I've taught them so that they have a subsistence life. And I pray again that as I see each and every one of you here, I feel the spiritual value of our ancestors right here before us. And as I myself, who is a very simple person. And I've been asking you time and time to get this so we can have clarity and have respect for each and every one of us. That giving the right for the indigenous rights for our people, our children, please pass whatever it needs that we have regulate here. And I pray to all senators, if this the last thing I would see, I would be so honored and not to feel that even today, as I told you, I cry inside my heart each time where I have to sit down and go out there and fish. And yet, now I come in and I would like, Senator, that for you to recognize all these people here that are here today. It touches me when I see all these people. And for one, why are we here today? For one reason. We deserve that respect. We deserve what is heritage to us. And not to cut us up. Because I see some people out there that's flourishing from another place. And why does our children have to go and get arrested, let alone myself? And right here is our director here. And for the first time, we are able to touch bases and I thank you both for, to me, this is a spiritual life that is open. It opens up an avenue of spiritual value. And I hope you send these messages to all the senators that we have, which is the 15. And I pray for all of you senators, if you're out there listening and looking at this, please do the rightful thing and honor our people and give them back what is owed by them and for our children to marry from generations to generation. And I pray again, Senator, and I'm gonna keep saying this. As I look before this TV up there, I will want some solution. And that solution is to open these waters for our people. We're not all tomorrow's nowadays. We have different marriages between different bonds. And that should be respected, no matter how we do it. But the respect of the value of who we are and what we live by, don't take it away from us again. We deserve it. It's an honorable thing that our culture, that we live in and we share with the other cultural people that comes here for Cultural Affairs to be able to acknowledge and transfer these different things that we learn from each other. I wanna thank you both. I know I'm, I'm in pain right now, but I wanna thank you both. Because I was thinking that the senators that promised me to be here tonight, I forgive them. But I would like to expect one thing. I would like for them to acknowledge what we are crying for because I'm tired of crying for the things and we should not be in this way. We should be in the way that people will acknowledge who we are and give us the chance and each and every one of us to give that translation. Let our children go out there and fish so that the tourist industry can marry from this and look at the cultural perspective that is still in hand. Please give us that respect, senators, and I hope you send a message to them.
Si Dus Masih, talat zero. Can we also give him another round of applause because he was... And then, you sir. And is Trini the last one that wants to speak tonight? Or is someone gonna, anyone else that has to know? Okay, sir, you and then Trini will be the final speaker for tonight.
No way, ladies first.
Then that means you're never gonna go.
Koneste, ungen.
Okay, Trini.
Si Dus Masih, hamdun. Ma'pus lo, si Senator Yamasito lo hago mas. Chairman, Senator Royce Fisher. Ungen, in chechegui, it's a chomami, in naian. Za, ala gos pinitio, nay si talat zero. Zaga iki korasona, ido. Za, gade si todo i finatutu niastiman mafatonegi, i todo i members gi fishing task force, indigenous fishing task force. Za ni, the director, Department of Agriculture, ungan man, man, naatingan dididik. Sa nu, mautu di kalan paktu, no? Za, ini tu mi legislature zaman mautuan. Za, gua man nyogaan laan man ku, ku afapem biranzu pati lo, makan doli petas tanan, tumutugal guzung danggualuki menutugino. Za, indanangka ku magai penpan senhanua, pa nu, benpanyaongka sa, graatsa, tim, sempigua mautu gi toto mami ne. Za ben sangoni na, basta nu, dimolas lo, omalengan, fanano pay gua mi zuzu na likra i, sa i stipakdo. Za, o, malaguno tungu ku marikor i, finona si talat zero. Za, gomalangu, gomalangu si talat zero. Ungan, siga kada roto sangoni, afagwagaha, put istipeka, ni malalagu, zezu mas malagona. Ay, Trini, za nuli i, monisantidu moate, antidu hono. Za, digi finaisenegi zamjo. Bala lukui, gui ni nu, mustototboha, nu, ungan man maolik, nu, man naadanaan, za in chechegui, guagui ni nu, tinasudun i, ma'pus na, Department of Agriculture, ay ti si maritita leleko, taitagui sa maolik, ku maolik, za napalanan. Za, respetan fanidu sa, nu, nu, gos karino sia, karino sia, za untuafa, umiddi, napalanan. Za, matututu, gi aga culture lu, gata lu nu, tutu na, ku magalo, nay, talu. Za, digi tamoro, perfektu napalanan. Untuwa na i metra ku, society hit, i palanan mastakilo. Esti napalanan ugi i, damit gut. Za, tutu gi maski, ta expect, ulili i. Puas nu, anhafa ne, za, nu, kalan weak points, whatever, munga fanma, di siga ma, ma, pongun, pa madengku, put fa bot, faisinu, fatamano, sina ta juda gue.
Puas pay faisinu, hafa tamanu sina ta juda hau. Hafa tamanu.
Ho, eni gi mas maolik, respeto za palanan ido za, sainata lo kui.
Ungen.
Ha adlay za, na pinitio, nay ni, siga okofa de stile.
Lo, ti tutu guido.
Ay, de lo siga.
Lo, gana ba na olasas, ha i.
Gi, gi, hinasu, ungan. Hinasu, ungan. Za, enri para ne, nu, faisinu, hafatamano pay judo. Za, noyu tempo, za sina ma judo. Za, gua tau tau na, sheni, mulat tungu ne, za sina faisin. Za, za, alofa ne, a, a, kuntushan, puas hafa kutat sagagi, pa nu, sina e, man meeting monu na ora, za, para hami ne, agos respetahan. Za, edi i, i, malalangu, ki zaguiza, edina aguaidza ham.
Puas dispenser do.
Edigi, perfektu tamoro, ya guaidza ham. Puas, inguaidza gui lo kui. Lo, esti guagui ni, o mention puas i, i, o tuna, edi, mena danistan na director, Department of Agriculture, i, ane mena dan esti, i, ane mena dan rules and regulation in dahalong, pa, imena dan i di public law, pes afana, Bill ni po, Bill 190, no? Za, le muta i gi doza, lo, mege.
Ha, di malo do?
Bill 190 do, nay gi ma'pus gi domu, legislature 32, oh, 32, 31. Ane gayi gi si duty.
Lo, i ga tsongo tumogui do, si Senator Gutter.
Ane gayi gi si Senator Duty Gutter. Za, maska ballis, edu, kada pa benfatina, si stiguaha, nu, nu, fakta za, in keke, suhafa tamano, pa nahalong, edi di gustak, machinu na public law, 127. Kulane, edi ne i, guy shorts, soni, za, ti sino nu sa shorts, musa, minis, mini, hafa ju bikini, ku mekeleku. Amano yo shorts, upon usa, za ti size, musa, si dia.
Lo, ti ma ba usa bikini, Trini.
That is public law 127. One, public law 127 dash 29, okay? Puas guaha talu, bay faisinu, za, put fa bot, ekungo, nonanga, per, per, ekungo, put fa bot. Bunga man na, i, edini, esti pay zona opinion. You have your own legal aid. Puas talu hamjo man gi, ilu hamjo, tabdung minasumidu, atan i, mena dan gini, hami, za ni, Department of Agriculture, Zen DCi. Munga ni man malalagu, andu gati gi edi za, hey, sangonian ku on constitution or inorganic, tata gi organic act na, man citizenship it gi, mana funat, ma delete edu. All of the organic act is deleted.
Okay, puas esta.
So, put fa bot, atan, hamji gi legislature, munga ma blockantalu, put fa bot. Za, digi bidana, ne si Dus Masih.
We're not the ones who were, Trini, we're not the ones that blocked.
That's what happens, si Dus Masih, malalagu, gua tu gi edi za, hey, sangonian ni domu legal opinion za, na on constitution is ita, that's what blocks us all, put fa bot.
Mr. Torres was with the executive branch, not with the legislature, Trini.
Ah, ah, ne, lo, digi bidana, puas angin, angin esti ne.
Hafanad, za monu lumasas do.
Ay, ay, de lasas, abunita, lasas mo. Right. Ofa faisinu, ofa faisinu, na, na, esti ne i aga culture, mena dan han, debina ni na ini, ni mena dan.
Puas latsa dik, ne, latsa dik.
And you look it over, put fa bot.
Latsa dik.
Munga ma trega, gua ti edi za, prasiel, put that big obstacle so we never get our fishing, indigenous fishing rights. Edigi, put fa bot, lai.
Tapak pakifan si Trini, za, ta faisin. Puas esta, si Dus Masih.
The Si Dus Masih.
Sir, while you're helping me with my tomorrow, Trini, si Dus Masih. Thank you. Hagopas. Hagomas.
Hafadei, nanosia, John Raymond Apitiogun, ta totalu fofo do, sekentre kotsu onu do. Si tatao, si kin, kostruogun, sinanao, si museela napatiogun. Puas asangan edi manenao, sa sia pumoksa idu, sia may stroku, ne pay kineloho poku. Za, na di ti mongi ne, maka leo do, disti, 1982, ma graduate to Chapman University. Puas anganeno, sa ti guawa edi, pas kadot ni tada tinengo. Guaha dididitinengo. Wa, atan edi amku gini, si talat zero. To do amdo na sinadot ni manai gi gini, dongkulu na si Dus Masih, ni man ta respetu midu. Utuwa na guaha, otsu mas, nabrotu, or, guapi na nagui, sa, mangai familiam do. Lo, dalai, dalai de, ampa tamoro manai gi amdo. Lo, kom public hearing esti pasalapi, mangai gi amdo. Eni gi monabububuikorasonu, za ku meke mata edi tau tau gini, mangagogo ni di retsonya. Ni haga sa, mafan yaogu ta tana, ta tana biwasangan, haga sa di retsonya. Lu man matanda i, sa i liblo ni, tato san hidung, parata taitai, parata tendi. Za, i libotani, haga sa, gini, mangai gi, man tamoru, itamoru, mas di chest meat. Antidu mafan yaogu do, mangai gi gini. Ku meke matai. Lo, paraofa amza, si talat zero, sa talat zero. Lo, hasu, na mege butunya, roki azu gi familiam ne. Za, to do amdo ni manega genauzung, man ihita, unfamilia man parentis. Bu dispenser, edisi sinadot, sia ni ma gaytina ni. Mangai atsa ki, mangai familiar. Lo, dalai, roki atsa, za ti sina na'iam, ma sia, 5 minutos. And if not, Senator Ted Nelson dididir, respetu, angin tada za. Za, nona pay ke margin for maman. Gua, ma bibbene do gi ping paket. Mautu gini, sa peskadot si tatao, peskadora sinanao, domongkulu do, peskadot. Ma sia afana peska malagomo, tan tekking, tan taladza, tan manholla, tan liu, tan naipanglaw, to do no siel tutugi. Lu na piniti, igayo ya lungu mo, mu. Za, pul matanda, za pul masanganin naian, no sina mata'tsango, kilama san bumoka. Igimau, itanou, igislangguahan. Ungan, magai edi finona si talat zero. Kon matan salapi, ele kroto, malak, za talak. Pur sit, pur sigi, lu matogui. Sa, salapi di jet ski, salapi di fish eye. Lu tada sina fumahan, ikuturahu, ni on medinariu, ti sina on fahan do. Sa ikuturahu, la la la, tada. Say, Kuturahu, La, 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 Ta, Za, Na, Matai. Say, Diggy, Ou, Do, Ni, Ha, Pa, Ki, Ha, Gan, I, Le, Yu. Za, Gua, Lo, Qui, Dai, Biti, Su, Za, Kume, Ke, Matai, Do. Lo, Ti, Bo, Mataya, Papa, Za, Ti, Pa, Bumumuzi, Gi, Ha, Gan, I, Le, Yu, Ni, Kuturon, Ya. Si, Not, Una, Fuck, Pa, Sti, I, Put, Esti, Indigenous Rights, Na, Ya, Ta, Ti, Ni, Di, Rechon, Mommy, Ni, Ta, Taotanu. Parahafan, Ni, Discrimination, Parahafan, Ni, Federal Funds, Hamdun, Ni, Gubet, No, Gua, Salapi, Na, I, Kutura, Ni, Salapi, Za, Supporti, Ita, Taotanu. Enige, Ogogogo, Amzun. Off, My, Federal Grand, Kontu, Na, Federal Grand, Mano, E, Bounty, Snit, Pul, Midzon, Za, Gua, Gua, Snit. Ti, Ta, Ni, Si, Ta, No. Guaha, Do, Ta, Grand, I, Do, Ta, Great Grand, Do, Ta, Grandfather, Grandmother, Si, Gi, Do, Ta, Grand.
Magai.
Za, His Spiritu, Ga, Gi, Ki, Koroson, Ta. Eni, Am, Ungas, Za, Taotou, Gi, Do, Za, Debino, Pesca, Gi, Ni, Gi, Ta, Si Ta, Ay, Ti, Debby. Debby, Na, Ga, Edju, Privileyu, Angin, Ti, Taotanu. Za, Ta, Na, Edju, Respetu, Mano, Yo, Por, Emplo, Si Pat, Atterton, Do, Mongkulu, Ngwama, Do, Ma, Fan, Niogu, Ta, 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 Ma, Rekanu, Ta, Na, Privileyu. Lu, Hit, Ta, Ni, Taotanu, Tisi, Ni, Ta, Kunni, I, Guiam, Ta, Gi, Mismu, Ta, Si Ta. Ano, Pa, Ya, Do, Cha, Gi, Van, Manguni, Gi, Gi, Ta, Si Ni, Za, Tilma, Sedi. Za, Ha, Di, Ga, Ta, No, De, Ga, Gi, Kontuntasi, Do, Ne, Do, Na, Lagar, I, Kontuntasi. Do, Misia, Ni, Taotania, In, Si Ta, Pu, Privileyu, Pu, Fa, Meska, Gi. Say, I, Pan, Ma, Outlaw, I, Fishing, Ne, Ampun, Taladza, In, Si Ta, Register, Perewa, Za, Luta, Mismu, Kompalekum, Arista, Za, Adog, Taotadza, Ta, Za, Register, De, Kula, Ni, Pa, Ri, Taotanu, Oh, Lu, Enige, Line, Ni. I, Pa, Ma, Mat, Gi, Ni, Guam, Ita, Za, Gubet, Namentu, Parahaji, Si Na, Pu, Meska, Za, Ha, Di, Ti, Si Na, Pu, Meska, Lu, Guaha, Line, Malikna, Preservation. Ma, Za, Boshangani, On, Si, Na, Do, Za, Todu, Amzun, Man, Egungo, Do, Mongkulu, Ta, Lo, Fofo, Do, Ani, Lekna, Sinanao, Rukoi, Ni, Lilin, Talumpu, U, Rukoi, Todu, Dongkulu, Pa, Di, Kiki. Eni, Na, Do, Ti, Ta, Ti, Ni, Di, Kiki, Do, La, Dankulu, Para, Ma, Malan, Na, Tempu. Pago, Ta, Za, Talumpu, Esti, Ma, Pa, Na, Me, Smuzungo, Gi, Na, Ta, Si, Dididik, Kike, U, Za, Ni, On, Talumpu, Li, I. Ta, Va, Za, To, Ri, Ta, Ta, Za, Ni, Do, Man, Mautu, Za, Ma, 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 Ka, Gua, Stodu, Say, Edji, Di, Kiki, Na, Lilin, Talumpu, Malagoni, Ya, Say, Edji, Man, Na, Na. Dongkulu, Na, Na, Si, No, I, Ko, Kontuwa, Fa, Dogas.
Utungwa.
Ta, Za, Dogas, Za, Todu, Ta. Lu, Esti, Line, Pu, Passa, Nay. Indigenous People, Mangai, Do, Privile, Uh, Autoridad, Pu, Fan, Hu, Do, Gi, Ta, Si Ni, Za, Fa, Meska, Palinala, Ni. Pago, Ji, Ma, Sasa, Sangani, Fi, Fino, English, Grandfather, Ji, Hey, Ti, Man, Temo, Ru, Lu, Haga, Sa, Gi, Ni, Man, Dongkulu, Gi, Ni, Na, I, No, Si, Privileyu, No, Si, Za, Ma, Tungua, Ilinala, Temo, Man, I, Hit, Ta, Man, Ma, Shopit. Bueno, On, Emplo, Za, Zo, Hopkins, Ma, Rekanusti, Do, Mongkulu, Palau, Pesca, Do, Mautu, Gi, Ni, Na, Way, Ga, Gi, Na, Bu, Bira, Gi, Ta, Ti, Way, Za, Ta, Za, Un, Estegui, Ni, Pesca, Kan, Ya. Lum, Malabu, No, On, Emplo, Esti, Ma, Pa, Na, Do, Mingu, Ta, Lo, Fofo, Be, Kotu, Days, Ung, Ka, Do, Min, Pesca, Do, Gi, Ni, Chuk, Ma, Meska, Gi, Do, Do, Za, Ma, Tutsu, Ni, Pu, Ma, Bend, Gi, Ulu, Gi, Bara, Gara, Yap, Store. Edgi, Ta, Si, Sedi, Pu, Linatse, Guiam, Ta, Gi, Ni, Lu, Ta, Za, Nay, Line, Edgi, U, Man, Agwa, Line, Za, Elai, Gi, Ni, Ita, Taotanu, Mangai, Autoridad, Autorisa, Pu, Fan, Hu, Do, Gi, Ta, Si Ni, Za, Mokoni, Guiam, Ya. Ta, Gi, Edgi, Katitina, Fina, Si, Si, Ni, Si, Talajero. Ha, Fana, Ta, Chat, Chonda, Ita, Taotanu, Lu, Ita, Ta, San, Ni, Do, Mangai, Gi, Gi, Ta, Lo, Fofo, Be, Kotu, Days, Ma, Ma, Meska. Lu, Honoa, Fatanu, Ni, Chuk, Yap, Palanu, Do, Za, Gua, Line, Ya, Na, Ante, Taotanu, Oh, Tisi, Ni, Pu, Meska. Haga, Sa, Si, Senator BJ Cruz, Pu, Outlaw, Ji, Ah, Okulang Fishing, Esti, Do, Debino, Ma, Malai, Do. Malatalu, Sangani, Gua, Gi, Ni, On, Group, Chok, Chukis, Size, Ten, Ten, Ni, Guian, Gi, Ni. Gua, Gi, Ni, On, Na, Groupu, Size, Butinya, Yamaha, 22 Footers. And, A, Kokoni, To, Ri, Taotan, Do, Za, Si, Gi, Ma, Meska, Za, Pu, Ma, Bend, Gi, Ni. Lu, Taotan, San, Ni, Do, Lu, Kon, Taotanu, Tisi, Ni. In, In, Si Ta, Line, Za, Edji, Line, Za, Boshangani, Amzun, Fi, Fino, English, Indigenous People Are Authorized To Fish In Warm Ocean, With The Exceptional Few. All Others Requires Permit. That's Very Simple Law, No? Ti, Nesi, Ta, El, If, No, Trini, Attorney General, Pu, Review, Co, Organic, Or, Inorganic. Za, Ha, Fa, Kompara, Edju, Na, Lay, O, Sangan, Za, Ilantros. Ilantros, Ya, Ga, Ma, Se, Gua, Za, Ma, Rekanu, I, Pa, Gun, Ni, Ya, Ma, Rekanu, Temo, Ru, Pus, Ga, Ha, Ga, Nay. Lu, Ti, Leliko, Chonda, No, Za, Apaka, Oh, Ma, Rekanu, Ta, Ta, Ya. Lu, Ga, Ha, Ga, Nay, Perewa, Za, Ilantros. Half A, Mas, Na, Hunt, Ta, Man, In, Si Ta, Gi. Half A, Mas, Na, Hu, Do, Edju, Na, Lay. Indigenous People Have All The Rights, 24/7, To Fish On Their Own Ocean, With The Exceptional Few. Za, Ta, Tungwa, Ha, Di, Na, She, Exceptional Few. Za, Man, Ha, Ha, Ma, Meska, Gi, Do, Ma, Si, Ti, Temo, Ru, Lu, Ma, Comprendi, Ilinala, Temo, Ru, I, Respetu, Itasi, Za, Ni, Ta, No. Ta, Za, Mas. And, Lelene, The Director, Na, Man, Melingue, Federal Grand, Por, Lu, Guaha, Government Of Guam Grand, Guaha, Taalu, Ta, Taotanu, Do, Ni, Ya, Grand, Grandfather, Grandmother, Grandpa, Grandzayu. Edgi, Mas, Dongkulu, Grandzayu. Senator Dongkulu, Na, Si Dus, Masie, Ni, Na, Ni, Esti, Apet, Ti, Ni, Do, Za, Na, Ha, Di, Gi, Za, Hamdun, Utzu, Ut, Ni, Sinan, Am, No, Dispenser, Do, Lu, Sasa, Sangani, Idinanti, Idirechu, Za, Ni, Minagai. Na, I, Ita, Taotanu, Ni, Di, Rechon, Ni, Ya. Vasta, Man, Ma, Chonda, Ita, Taotanu, Sa, Ti, Mang, Ga, Ga, Am. Biba, Temo, Ru, Biba.
This is our land, this is our fish, this is our water, we're gonna take it back.
Okay. Director, do you have any closing comments? If not, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight, and for your participation.
The Senator will assure us that he's gonna give us all the funding that we need.
Whatever you requested for in the budget, you'll be very pleased with it. Okay, thank you. We're adjourned. Thank you.